Here at least on mine.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, I did participants are there and then where Andy?
If you click on, if you hover the mouse over yourself, your own name.
Uh huh, okay.
When I do it, I get, there's a button called more. Do you get such a button?
Um, no, I see we're web, I see we're streaming live on Facebook, so I imagine they can all hear us right now. Yeah, so let's, and it's six o'clock now, so Suzanne, I'm gonna turn it to you to tell me when I no longer need to wait, you know, and I can actually start the meeting.
We are ready to go.
Okay, then I'm going to call this meeting to order March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and called order, and I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Armand Darris to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. And invocation, do we have Pastor Bill Hawkins here from New Hope Community Church?
Yes, I'm right here.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I wanted to just say in echoing of some of the conversation before, we definitely support our teachers one hundred percent, and have been praying for our teachers and administrators as well as our students, and I would like to continue that in our prayer of invocation this evening, praying over and for our community, for our teachers and administrators, it's been a difficult, difficult year for them, and we definitely want them to know that they're supported, so let's, let's pray for the invocation this evening. Well, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and it says in your word that it's new every morning, and this has definitely been a season this last year, more than ever before, that we've needed to draw upon the mercy and the goodness of God. And so we, we thank you for that, we thank you that we can see you at work in our lives and in our community, and we do lift up and we're thankful for our teachers and grateful for their sacrifice, for their dedication, for not just them as teachers and educators, but them as supporters and confidants and, and coming alongside of our kids and walking them through difficulty, so we pray that you would encourage them and our administrators and the difficult job they have to do and, in leading and guiding our school district, and we pray for our students and all that they've had to face over this last year, I have four, so I know firsthand what it's been like, as well as many that are on this Zoom call or watching on Facebook, so we pray for our students for safety and for things to begin to open up when it's the proper time and that they can socialize and get back. Well, we thank you for our first responders, we pray again that you would watch over them as they watch over us, and continue to keep our community and the members of our community safe and healthy. We pray your guidance this evening in the meeting and all that will take place, we pray that in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Alright, city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-one at two thirty-five PM. Rebecca Armand Darris, present. Dion Bracco.
Here.
Zach Hilton.
Here.
Pedro Lerone Munoz.
Present.
Carol Marks.
Here.
Fred Tovar. Murray Blankley.
Here. Alright, orders of the day, I'm just gonna move right into my usual announcement. All council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N twenty-nine twenty in order to minimize the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on cable channel seventeen and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three, or logging into Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash R B dot G Y forward slash U B I zero three K, and enter passcode nine three one eight seven zero. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad, or use the raise your hand icon. I'd like to also ask that viewers watching, please do not raise your hand until I call on public comments for the item on which, on which you wish to speak, okay? So with that, I'm moving on to employee introductions, I don't believe there are any. And then ceremonial items, proclamations and awards, we have none. Presentations to the council. Public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Suzanne, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Uh, it looks like we do have some public comments on items not on the agenda, I will call the first one. The first will be Ethan Mendelson, I am hitting allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hi there, sorry about that, that's my son's name, my name is Julia Mendelson, I'm using his iPad. I just wanted to say that I strongly support the safe storage ordinance, and I hope that you will consider it. This issue is very important now, more than ever due to all the kids at home doing distance learning, as well as the rise of mental health issues. Many other nearby towns have already adopted this, and I hope that Gilroy can follow their lead and do it as well, thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, any others?
Yes, we have, the next is Robert Whitehair, I am pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, actually, this is Terry Whitehair, and I wanted to talk on the safe storage ordinance. Nearly every day in this country, one small child unintentionally kills himself or another child after finding an unsecured firearm typically in their home. Every day, on average, two teens commit suicide using an unsecured firearm from their home or relatives' home. Unsecured firearms are unsafe. We urge you to vote on the safe storage ordinance and carry it forward, that will cause all of our communities to be safe, thank you.
Thank you, next caller?
The next is Dawn Vief, I am hitting allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. The justification for having guns in the home is always given as keeping one's family safe, but for years, statistics show that it's more dangerous to live in a home with guns than in a home without guns. For every home invasion which you so rarely hear about, there are multiple accidental shootings and many more suicides. Another aspect of safe storage is that firearms are one of the most desirable targets of burglary, and stolen guns almost always go on to be used in the commission of other crimes. All city council is considering here is how to balance the right to bear arms with the responsibility to do so safely. Two closing thoughts, gun safes and locks are designed to be quick to open, particularly with practice. And second, maybe you can be trusted to store your weapons safely without it being required by law, but ask yourself honestly if every gun owner you know will be as responsible as you are, thank you very much.
Thank you, next caller?
Next is Kelly Traver, I'm hitting allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, mayor and council members, I'm a mother and a physician, I also asked this council to consider the adoption of safe storage. As mentioned, many cities have already adopted this, close to about twenty, I believe, in San Mateo and Santa Clara alone. Many people are under the false impression that the California Penal Code already addresses this, this issue, and that's understandable because it has many layers, but it absolutely does not, I can't emphasize that more, the most recent modification in twenty twenty still leaves the law very deficient. This is because it doesn't define how to safely store a firearm, it also doesn't apply to all homes. For example, parents often hide their guns rather than locking them up, but studies show seventy percent of kids know where they, the guns are hidden. Twenty-five percent have actually even handled them without the parent's knowledge. A safe can be bought for forty dollars at, you know, and trigger locks are often given out free, so it's not an undue burden, and studies are very clear that it doesn't impair protecting oneself if needed, a gun can be accessed in a safe in a matter of seconds. To those of you who think it must be a small issue with only a few deaths, please know this is not the case. One in three homes in this country have a firearm and sixty percent are unsecured, and Gilroy is no different. The statistics have already been mentioned by people before me, I'll, I'll just tell you, as a physician, I have seen a teen brought in dead on arrival due to gun suicide, I've seen a child with their leg blown off because they found a gun in a boyfriend's home that a babysitter brought them to, even though, you know, the, the child, they weren't in their own home, it was just a person who had, had a gun lying around. I've seen a man paralyzed due to unsecured firearms being stolen in a home robbery, I mean, this, it happens, it, it, it is a, a major public health issue that's only gotten worse with COVID, so please know, this has nothing to do with infringing on the Second Amendment, and no one is trying to take guns away, this is simply for public safety. Even Anthony Scalia in his majority opinion, twenty-ten in the Supreme Court, said "An individual has the right to bear arms, but it does not mean that this cannot be regulated," and this is all the ordinance would do, thank you.
Thank you, alright, next caller?
Next caller is Yvonne Murray, I am hitting allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself. Yvonne Murray, you may unmute yourself.
There, am I unmuted this time?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, thank you, my name is Yvonne Murray, and I am speaking in support of the ordinance on safe storage of firearms. I speak to you as someone who has lost a family member to suicide, and someone, my family is a family of gun owners. When my daughter was sixteen, she was dealing with a lot of issues of self-worth, and she decided to make a suicide attempt. Fortunately, because our guns are safely stored, she took an overdose of Tylenol and was able to get the help she needed so that she could recover from that and get the mental health support, so that sixteen years later, she is still alive and we are still making memories together. I think that safe storage of firearms is an important ordinance so that everyone who owns a firearm can be safe both for family members and for friends who come over and everyone, because your life is forever changed and the lives of many when someone is lost due to firearm, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, next is Karen Pendula, I am hitting allowed to talk now.
Thank you, mayor and city council members, for the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting. I'm also asking that you vote yes to add, to add safe storage to your city's codes. As a survivor of gun violence, I know firsthand the trauma and pain of losing a precious child to gun violence. Since our daughter's murder, I have committed to preventing gun violence so that another family is not torn apart by gun violence. If preventing gun violence saves just one life, then we've made all the difference in the world to those who loved, whose loved one was killed, thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Leah Elkins is next, I am pushing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Leah Elkins, and I'm also speaking on the same subject, I'm not sure if I can add anything more to the, to the, what the previous callers all said. This is an important safety measure and does close a, a gap in state law, and, and both Santa Clara County and San Mateo County, and among other counties have already taken this step, and now it's just up to the individual cities to close those gaps inside their own borders, so I would urge you to consider this as something that you should take up in the near future, thank you.
Alright.
Uh, next is Taylor, I am pushing, pushing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hi there, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I'm in support of the safe storage ordinance as well. I myself am a gun owner, and I am fully in support of the Second Amendment, and I am in no way, shape or form trying to take that away from anyone, I just truly believe that it is being a responsible gun owner to keep it in a lockbox away from children or even away from a potential burglar, and so, thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next is Stephen Hayes, I'm pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Stephen Hayes, I'm the local president for twenty-two five Gilroy firefighters. This is unrelated, and I actually feel like I'm stepping on other people, but we just became aware of Two Oaks being closed, making the Los Animas Fire Station do first for the Heartland District that CAL FIRE usually covers. It's an unreliable source, we understand that we cover the dirt first now, and we're really gonna make a push with city council members and just to educate you guys and beg that that's Santa Teresa's first due district, and it crushes us to close every night at eight PM, especially now knowing that dirt is uncovered, so I, I beg you guys that now is the time, we need to cover that dirt, with CAL FIRE being out of the picture, we need to get that covered, so thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with all of you about this matter that we just became aware of, have a good night.
Alright, thank you, any others?
Uh, the next is Mailing de la Cruz, I'm pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a mother and a Gilroy resident, I'm here to demand action for gun safety and storage. As responsible parents, our first priority must be the safety of our children. For that reason, we must ensure that they cannot access a firearm. To demonstrate our commitment, we must keep firearms in a locked container or disabled with a trigger safety, therefore eliminating the possibility of our children or any other unauthorized person to access the weapon, thereby possibly avoiding countless tragedies, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Next is Louis, I am pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I believe that when it comes to saving lives and preventing unnecessary injuries, we should all strive to do more and not less. For example, in California, we have extensive building codes to protect us in case of an earthquake disasters. These include tie-down, defadash foundations, cross bracing, water heater straps, and many others. Similarly, we know that safe storage of firearms can help prevent accidental injury or death, thwart suicide attempts, and deter firearm thefts. Storing our firearms in a suitable lockbox or safe is the sensible thing to do. And many now have key code or fingerprint access mechanisms so that opening them only takes a couple of seconds. Ensuring public safety and well-being is our shared responsibility, so let's all do what we can to prevent unnecessary injuries and to save precious lives. That's why I urge you to add a safe storage amendment to the city code, thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne, can you ask people to announce their first and last names when they speak, I think that's what we do when we're in person, do we not?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, next?
Alright, the next, we have two more raised hands, the next is Madeline and Stephen, I'm hitting allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hi there, my husband is a gun owner, and-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you, can you announce your name, please?
Yeah, sorry, my name is Maddie Johnson.
Thank you.
And I encourage you to vote yes on the safe storage ordinance, my husband is a gun owner. We fully support the right to bear arms, but let's please, please be safe and responsible about it, this is not infringing on people's constitutional rights to bear arms. Anyone who writes in saying so is not educated, we're not saying you can't have a gun, we're saying you need to store it safely, a gun is one of the most sought-after items in a home invasion. If my husband and I are out working, we'd never forgive ourselves if someone broke in, stole that gun, and caused harm to our city. My son has clinical depression, and God forbid, if we didn't keep our firearms safely locked away in our safe, he could act impulsively on one of those lows and take his own life. It takes five seconds to punch in a code on a lockbox, it also takes five seconds for a kid to take his own life with a firearm. Please, we need to be able to protect our homes, but we also need safe storage ordinance so we can protect our city from those who might act unlawfully, or those vulnerable to mental health illnesses who might act impulsively, thank you.
Thank you, next person?
Uh, the next is George Palacio, pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, how you guys doing today? Nice to meet you guys, this is my first time, my name is George, like you may have noticed. I'm a, I'm a young dude from Gilroy, California as well, maybe the youngest person in this chatroom, but I like to express a couple of things and a couple of feelings that I have in my heart and on my chest, so I would like to say, first off, guns ain't good, and a way to get rid of the depression and maybe drawing the community together. My friends, family and I, we like to run in the Gilroy area, we like to hike Mount Madonna, we like to run around the levee and everything like that. And I know that there's a coronavirus protocol and everything like that, but I take a look at Texas, I was talking to my friend in Texas, and he said Texas wide open, we end with them, before we're done and everything, and it don't make sense to me, but nonetheless, if you trace back to my steps and getting it back to the depression and gun part, and creating the community together, I would say it would be a good, maybe, this is my, this is my idea right here, maybe. I like to make music, and I know many people like to make music, many youngsters. And I say, we can open up the Gilroy Christmas Theater right there, get a music group going on, I'll get a running group going on. We could unite the community more so, and I'd like to know when the coronavirus protocol will be lifted, I see thousands of people at Valley Fair, mall. What city is that, Cupertino? No, maybe something like that, thousands of people every day, it don't make no sense to me, and I see people kicking me out of their households and, and how does the restaurant shut up, what a mess, yeah. That truly is a market of beasts, if you look at Revelation chapter thirteen, that is a market of beasts, when you can't borrow stuff, but nonetheless, I am a born and raised in Gilroy, California, right here, Alexander Street, Fairview Drive, I'm sure if you guys know anything about the, I'm sure you guys may know a couple of things about these places, and I'm active in these places, I'm currently here right now, and I see many people of these communities, and I like to speak up for many of these people of the communities, and I don't mind, I'm a young dude, twenty-one years old, I don't know who else is with me, but if I gotta be by myself, I'll be by myself, and when the time comes in two thousand twenty-four, I don't mind running for mayor, I don't mind becoming a part of the city council, man, nonetheless, these are just a couple of things that I have to say. Well, will these things be uplifted, who has the power to tell Gavin Newsom anything? If I had the power to tell Gavin Newsom anything, I would. I've done multiple reports on the whole thing, but no, listen, everyone's always right, it's all good. We're a time mathematics in kindergarten, we're five years old, and it's not hard to put one and one together, but nonetheless, that's all I gotta say. This is my first time in the meeting, you guys have a good day, God bless you guys, and I wish nothing but the best, positive energy to you.
Thank you. Thank you, alright, is that it for this item, Suzanne?
We had one additional hand just raised, and that is Paola Machioca. I'm pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much, my name is Paola Machioca, and I am calling also to please urge you to put in the agenda, the safe storage. As we all know, California does, has a safe storage for firearms, but has a lot of loopholes. It's not very clear what that means, and we know by statistics that there is a lot of accident that happen for just guns in the house that are not stored properly, and right now, with the pandemic, things are getting very scary for kids being at home, and sometimes, you know, parents work, they may not have the time to look after them, and so the possibility of more and more accident is there, so I hope you can consider that and talk about that, and have a good road to be safer, so, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, we had two more hands raised, alright.
Uh, the first one is going to be Kelly, Kelly, I'm gonna press allowed to talk, and please, uh, tell us your first and last name. You can unmute yourself now.
Good evening, my name is Kelly O'Shea, I apologize for my ignorance, is this the appropriate time to speak about the Adventure Park agenda item, or is that later in the meeting?
That's later in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
That's the next item up, actually, we're waiting to get to that, we're just waiting to get through people who are wanting to address the council on items not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Alright, the next person is Suzie McLean, I am pressing allowed to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you, my name is Suzie McLean, I'm a physician, and I also want to encourage the city council to consider a safe firearm storage ordinance. Doctors are concerned about this issue because firearm injury is the second leading cause of death for children and young adults in the US. This is tragic, these are preventable deaths, and obviously, we need to do more. Medical studies focus on two scenarios, one, childhood unintentional injury, and the second adolescent suicide. Other callers have already told heartbreaking stories around these scenarios. What I can say is that medical studies show that storing firearms securely locked lowers the risk of youth suicide and childhood unintentional injury. And I would be happy to provide you with references on these matters as you consider the benefits of a safe firearm storage ordinance for Gilroy, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, hands down now, Suzanne?
We had, um, yes, that was the last one.
Okay, so moving on to item A, was presentations by responders to the city's request for proposals for the potential development on five hundred and thirty-six acres of city-owned property located on Hecker Pass Highway. Jimmy, I'll let you introduce the speakers, I want everyone to know that they are both going to limit their talks to ten to fifteen minutes, and then we will have questions.
Alright. Thank you, okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as you may recall, back in late fall, early winter of last year, council directed staff to request for proposals for the potential possible development of land in the five hundred and thirty-six acres of city-owned out in out by Gilroy Gardens, and so as part of that process, we received two respondents to that, to that request, and so we thought it would be a good idea for the respondents to introduce themselves to the council and the community. We have a very long process to go to determine, first of all, what, what recommendation will ultimately come to council, and what will be, you know, approved by council, so this is the first step of many. Tonight, it is just an introduction, we're not asking for feedback or for any indication of what you prefer, we're giving you a chance to ask some questions if you, if you have them, but I also want to say in fairness to our respondents, they, they're very limited on what they can possibly talk about. We are not in negotiation, negotiations with either of them, we're evaluating their ideas and their concepts as companies, and there will be a time later down the road where you'll have a better opportunity to ask more specific questions, get more into the details, but we wanted to do this at an extremely high level and wanted you to get to know these, these, these groups a little better, so I have both here, and I see both select contracts and imagine that is here, so thank you, it looks like you guys were able to get on, okay. So I'll start with select, I did a coin flip earlier to see who gets to go first, I did ask them to keep- I did ask them to keep their presentations 10 to 15 minutes and then some questions from council. And they promised to answer them as best they can, but please understand that some questions they just will, will not be able to answer at this time. So with that, we'll start with Chris Sutton and Adrian Paul of Select Contracts. And then afterwards, we'll have Rich, Rick Harbor of Imagine That after Select Contracts is finished. So I'll turn it over to you, Adrian and Chris, and the forum's yours. And we'll need to let them share the screen.
Okay, and I'll be keeping time.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council and Jimmy for that introduction. Can everyone see that on my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Here we go. 10 to 15 minutes. So we've presented to council twice before. We've been working on this project since 2016. So a lot of the faces look very familiar on Zoom tonight. So thank you all for your support, for the continued support with this project. Really quickly on our company, we've been around since 1978 and we design, we build and we operate all types of adventure, leisure and recreation projects around the world. We've got head offices in Canada, but we do have a small office in Tahoe at the moment. We've got one in the United Kingdom and we've got an office in, in New Zealand. So we design projects, master plan them, do all the architecture projects. We create all the business plans, do all the master plans ourselves. We project manage and construct the projects ourselves as well. And then we've got an operations division that does all pre-opening and ongoing operations. And so we've been focusing very much on active participation projects for the past 25 years. So there's two types of entertainment. There's passive entertainment, which is the likes of theme parks where you've got to reinvest so much money every single year. And then you have active participation where you get people to actually engage and bike and surf and cable wake park and zip line. Anything that gets people outside, gets them adventurous, gets kids off the sofa, gets families to, to enjoy themselves together in an adventure environment. So we're doing so many different projects around the world right now, and this is definitely the core focus on, on moving forward. We have projects, like I say, all over the globe and we manage them between our existing offices. I'm not going to go too much into this, but we're doing a lot of work for ski resorts around the world. We're doing a lot of work for downhill bike parks. We're doing a lot of work for different surf parks and cable wakeboard parks around the world too. So Gilroy, we first met in October 2016. We designed the bike and adventure park on the hillside. We presented to the board of Gilroy Gardens. We then met council in 2019. And so it's great. And then we offered to include the base area in our, in our discussions after that. So we brought in the surf and the wakeboarding. Everything that we're doing is based on active participation. So surfing, wakeboarding, zip lining, hiking, sightseeing, low ropes course.
I can't see your presentation. We're, we're still looking at the first page only.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, that's fine. So okay, so then we have the, the master plan that we've created for this. And so this is the site overview. Where you can see Gilroy Gardens in the center of the page and then you can see the adventure park on the hillside behind. So that's where all the bike trails will be and the hiking trails and the zip lines. Gilroy Gardens then is in the center. And then in the baseland area, we've looked at adding a surf park. So a traveling surf wave and also looking at putting a weight boarding into there as well, just to increase that demographic and to increase the amount of active participation we have on site. That's the hillside. Lots of, lots of lines. We've walked the hillside a lot. We've, we've paced all the trails out. It's a fantastic mountain for bringing the bike trails into this. It's fantastic for sightseeing. We'd have a chairlift going up the mountainside as well. There'd be the zip line and the ropes course up there, hiking and sightseeing trails, mountaintop cafe and restaurant. And then at the base area, having a casual cafe, having the rental and retail and guest services. That's the layout of the base area just behind the, the reservoir. That's a rendering of the site. So people might be concerned that this is going to look ugly on the mountainside. But in reality, it will look like that. You're barely going to be able to see anything. You'll be able to see a lift line going up and you'll see the zip line coming out of the trees at the base. So very private and it will suit the mountainside nicely. Baselands. So after Gilroy Gardens, then we'd look at creating California's surf, first publicly accessed surf pool. And that'll cater to progression. So people that have never surfed before, all the way through to advanced surfers will be able to come through here. The wake park, same thing. It will be the first full-size wakeboard cable experience. And it will have a big tower system to be able to take intermediate and advanced riders and a smaller tower system to be able to take beginners. Then we've added in some cabin accommodations around the surf and around the cable at the base. We would also like to talk about including hotel accommodations, but we weren't sure if that was what, what the council and mayor thought about the hotel accommodations, but we do believe there should be some more accommodation on the site than what we've proposed. So we'd love to talk to you more about that. And then the, there'll be an event space down there in guest services. There's a quick master plan to show the, the base area. So more parking, you've got the surf pool, you've got the wake pool. And then you can see where it says additional car parking. There's lots of space to bring more hotels into that space. Should that be something we collectively decide to look at? So as mentioned, we're five years into this project. Love to keep it going. We would like to discuss an agreement to lease on the 536 acres of land from Gilroy. Then we'll need to raise the capital to get through the planning phases and get through the environmental impact assessment. And then once we have that in place, then we'd be looking to raise the remainder of the money to move forward with this project. So that was under your 10 minutes.
Yes, I timed it at 15 and you have eight left. So that's pretty good. Okay. All right. I guess we should go to, go to Imagine That before we go to questions. Is that, Jimmy, what you had planned? Or do you?
Madam Mayor, I thought it would be better if Adrian could answer the questions first, specific to his project.
Okay.
And then we'll go over to Rick Harbor.
Okay, so with council, you mean, not a public comment we'll do at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So council, any questions of Adrian? All right. I see, I saw council member Armand Dars. Okay, so we're going to go to Rebecca Peter Carroll. That's what I see right now. Okay?
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you. I didn't catch your name from Select Contracts?
Chris.
I'm Adrian.
Adrian's here as well.
Thanks, Adrian. Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. First, what kind of, what kind of benefits and programming, educational and recreational and discounts do you offer back to the community, to young people, to folks who want to participate in these? You know, if, if this is approved, what do you offer to locals in terms of like discounts, education for school kids and field trips, things like that? Can you talk about that?
Yeah, for sure. So we've worked on many projects around the world for over 40 years and everything you mentioned is a massive component of this. So first of all, we're very much designing, the first focus is designing around the community and what the community needs and activities that they can participate in. All of the trails on the mountainside, if people would like to ride their bikes up or walk up, they're all free for everyone else to use. That'll be about $2 million worth of infrastructure that, that is free should people choose to, to do that. If they pay for the lift, then obviously there'll be a ticket involved and they'll be able to go up and, and just do the downhill riding. As for school groups, every project we work on, we always, we've, obviously you're opening and closing at set times every day. And so mornings during the week are all super quiet. And so that's the opportunity that we have to actually either take our instructors out to the schools. Where we've, in, in the past, we have actually taken ramps and bikes and we've taken them out to the schools and we've taught people to ride mountain bikes properly on the school grounds. And then other times, we actually get those kids to come in with the teachers and they come and do day trips to the park. And so during the morning, we encourage that significantly for people to come and do that, for schools to come in and enjoy that. And that's typically at no charge for those school kids because again, we would like to get them into mountain bike and we'd like to get them fit and healthy.
Right. Great. And then I have a couple more. Mayor, do you want me to just go through all mine now or?
Well, it depends on how long you're going to take because we need, we do need everybody to have their turn. So if you want to ask one more, go right ahead.
I have, okay, I'll ask one more and then if we could come back. I have four total. This is a big, it's a big deal, right?
No, it's okay. This is an introduction, guys. It's an introduction. We're not, you know, and so this isn't the time to go deep and we all need a chance to speak. We have a long agenda and we've got a lot of public comments because they've been told that this is something more than an introduction. So, all right, go ahead.
So my second question is, what kind of pay and benefits do you offer to your employees? How many jobs do you expect to create with this? And do you have a local hire policy?
Yeah, sure. That's a lot of detail this early on in the conversation. We've, we have created a financial plan around this. And so there'll be approximately 200 local jobs formed and absolutely we try and recruit as locally as possible. So we'll put training programs in place as well so that anyone that comes to work at the park can actually progress through a, a career and they can become managers and either move on to other sites or become managers on the site. And so we do local job fairs and local job hiring. And so although we are head office in Canada, the 99% of the team will be local to Gilroy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Council member LaRoma Yost.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick questions. First, Chris and Adrian, very good to see you again. Thank you for your continued work over a sustained period of time with the city on this. With regard to the amenities, you talked about the bike path as well as the, as the water feature of that. When those amenities are at their full operational capacity, what are we looking at in terms of number of, of people being served in both of those two areas?
Adrian, do you have the number that we've included in the financials so far?
Um, yeah, I would have to do a bit of math to get that to that, but it, you'd be on a peak day, you'd be kind of in the thousand to 1500 range, most likely.
Okay, thank you. Then my second question is with regard to the, the cabin accommodations that were referenced. What do you see as the capacity there as well?
So we can incorporate a significant amount of cabins around the surf. I think we've incorporated 10 or 20 right now, but we'd like to include more than that. I think we'd like to get into a more detailed conversation about how many rooms are allowed to be positioned out here based on the official community plan. And but it could quite easily handle 200 hotel rooms with the attractions and the amenities that, that we've got on the, on the facility.
Great, thank you. It's helpful for me to understand what the universe of capacity might eventually look like and then kind of understanding that the details are to be worked out. That's all that I had. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Marks, followed by Councilmember Tovar.
All right, thank you. Chris, I just have one quick question. Well, actually two. What are your plans for the gardens?
Well, that's come up relatively recently in the conversations, adding that base area to the, the work that we're doing. And so the gardens would continue as the gardens and we'd incorporate it. We'd be able to bring in more families and more individuals to the overall park. And so there'll be lots of cross promotions between all of those different areas. And so the gardens has got a very special place in the hearts and minds of locals. And so we'd keep it operating, spruce it up, get involved with it a little bit more, see what other attractions we can bring in to kind of round that offering out as much as possible. There would be new investment coming in. So we could absolutely look at developing some new components for that.
All right, thank you. Just one other question. Do you envision doing the water construction at the same time as the mountain bike construction?
Potentially. I think that's going to depend on, on the phasing and what the agreements look like. But both projects can run hand in hand. I mean, they're very, they're very enclosed. So we can actually board both of those projects off and keep Gilroy Gardens running in the meantime. And it'll all depend on that environmental impact assessment and what stages that tells us to, to develop this in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, good to see you again. And again, thank you for all the work that you've done. The, the questions I had have already been asked by my fellow council members, but I'm to that it maybe we can a little bit more detail in regards to, you know, for a family or for an individual to utilize sort of the project that you're talking about, what, what typically is the cost? I just wonder about sort of the, the demographics and if every individual in, in our city or other cities would be able to utilize it or if it's something, it may be priced too much for individuals to use.
Yeah, sure. Again, that depends on what year this actually gets to open. So however, the, the price, the price will vary. So we have coffee shops at the base. We have restaurants at the base that anyone can come into. So anyone can come in and spectate.
Right.
Don't have to spend any money, but anyone can come and spectate these sports and that would be no cost. If someone wanted to go and ride a bike up our trails and come back down it, that's available at no cost. If someone wants to hike up those trails and hike back down, that's available at no cost. And then as soon as you start buying tickets, that's when we start to obviously have revenue generating.
Right.
And so I think the cheapest ticket price would be in the realm of $20 for anyone to walk into that surf and cable park area. So they get to come in and hang out and use the swimming pools and actually be a part of the beach and they can order food on the beach. So not actually participating in activities, but actually being able to be inside and walk around. And it's not much more like for maybe $30, people can start to participate in something. And then the prices raise up depending on season. Obviously summer's going to be more expensive than the winter time because it's busier. So it's, it's a low, it's zero cost if you want to come in and spectate or hike or bike. And then the costs start to, to come in after that.
No, and I asked that question. Thank you. Because yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of, you know, future plans for this site here. So I'm excited. I'm also excited to see that it would be affordable for, you know, every individual possibly. The second part is in regards to you mentioned about a possible hotel. When you've talked about that, at what capacity are you sort of envisioning that this hotel may, may look like? You know, in regards to the number of rooms and sort of the height, how many floors?
Again, too early to know that just now. We would want to do more detailed analysis on the marketplace itself. And to be honest, we would, we can talk about that to mayor and council.
Yeah.
Like, we're happy to put in whatever size hotel you're happy for us to build on however many levels. Like, we're not coming in to say it has to be in this. We want to create those amazing cabins that create that really cool experience where people have their own little barbecues on their decks, overlooking the surf, overlooking the cable, and then creating a hotel around that. So again, like I said before, it could be 100, 200 room hotel over two to four to six floors. Like, we have to work within your bill permit structure. And again, you're a big part of this. Like, we'll be coming in as, as, as the lessee on this. And so we'll be working really closely with you guys to figure out what's right for this site.
Yeah. And I, I know that's a question that we can't answer now, but I just, I'm just curious of sort of what you guys envision. But I think the one thing that I really love about Gilroy Gardens is the number of individuals from Gilroy that they hire, especially the kids, you know, and I think it was earlier from council member Armand Dars that it would be important, obviously, that we sort of continue that sort of trend that we're hiring individuals from Gilroy and sort of giving them opportunities, you know.
Absolutely. And like I said before, there will be a training program in place as well. So I mean, we'll need a lot of lifeguards, we'll need surf instructors, we'll need lift attendants on the lift, we'll need bike instructors, we'll need people that work in hospitality. And so there's training. It's finding those right individuals and it's training them in all of those areas. And everyone will have a choice to, to train up in different areas as well. We keep it very much like that. So we get people to stay and work for us longer because we train them up and they can, they can increase their career through us.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. And this hasn't been done before, right? Creating cable, surf, the hotels, the bat base, the, the year-round downhill lift access bike park. Having all of those things in one location, this, this will be a world first to have all those things come together. So this is an incredible opportunity to be able to make this happen in Gilroy and we're super excited by it.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Chris, very much. It's, it's very difficult to answer these, a lot of the questions before we know. It can almost be anything. That's the whole point. We're trying to figure out what are the possibilities and which direction do we want to go? And that's why I'm trying to, to reiterate for the public just how high level we are right now because we haven't decided to do anything yet. And until we hone in on if there's going to be a project, it's pretty tough to start nailing anything down. There's nothing stopping council members though, who just want to know more about the companies, to contact the companies. I mean, there's, there's no reason why, you know, you, you can't do that and get all that kind of information on your own. So with that, I'd like to, if it's okay, I'd like to move on to Imagine That. And that way we can then get to the public.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll introduce you to Mr. Rick Harbor, who is with Imagine That.
I'll introduce you to Mr. Rick Harbor, who is with Imagine That, and he has a presentation. So hi, Rick, go ahead and we'll share our screen and you can do your thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let me get the screen shared here. There we go. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me, I'm not sure which screen I'm sharing here.
It says Meeting the Future.
Right. Let's see. Can you guys see that? Still see that?
It's just a white screen now.
Oh, dear. Hang on one second. One second here. Let me start this over. Let me see if I can get to the shared screen thing again. This would be just, let's see. RH. Close. All right. Well, for some reason, it's not showing up there. I don't know why.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's, you know, there's technical glitches all the time, I guess. Let's see. Zoom. No, that's not it. Well, let me see if I can do this. How about now?
It's the first thing that you showed us before, Meeting the Future.
Okay, I think we're there then.
Okay.
All right, well, just a quick introduction of myself. And I have on the line as well Peter Shepard, who's our VP of Special Projects, and Kevin, who's our VP of Creative and Operations. We're honored to, you know, make this presentation to you guys. It was very interesting reading through everything that you had done already. And we're taking a slightly different approach. Select Projects, obviously, is very focused on one aspect or, you know, basically creating somewhat of what you were asking for. And there's no reason why there's not a way to actually combine what we're trying to do with what they're trying to do. So there's really not, I don't think this is a necessarily competitive thing. So what we're, you know, what we're doing is basically we've responded to your RFP, which I think what we believe was the best strategic approach to optimize the asset value of the 536 acre parcel of land. And so we share Gilroy's ambition to create a project that will basically, as you put in your RFP, establish Gilroy as a top outdoor recreation destination on the West Coast. You guys saw the switch to the next slide, did you not?
Yes, it did.
Perfect, great. I just want to make sure. So we believe with the right strategy, with the location, has the potential to go beyond the local visitor and become more of a nationally internationally recognized destination. Let's see, next slide, okay. So we think it's a unique asset and has the potential to create opportunity, jobs, economic benefits for the city. But it will be important, as the slide says, to basically get it right. And and one of the things we need to do to quote unquote "get it right" is to analyze the competing theme parks and attractions in the area so we can figure out how Gilroy fits into that overall regional picture. Again, we're taking this from a much higher elevation. Instead of 10,000 feet, we're at 30,000 feet, looking at the actual feasibility and the commercial viability of the location and the project. So one of the things that we want to do to get it right is to analyze, is to analyze, again, as I said, all the other locations. And within driving distance of Gilroy, there are multiple theme parks and tourist destinations that attract millions of visitors annually. And as you can see by the slide, Gilroy was able to produce visitation of just under half a million people in 2008. So considering Gilroy's location, their generous hospitality, there's no reason for that Gilroy shouldn't be getting a bigger slice of the millions of people who visit the area every year. So and given that over 36 million potential visitors come into the area, the pie can be pretty big. So with the beautiful mountaintop background and the site, the site creates a rich environment for what the Imagine That team sees as a new and captivating entertainment recreational playground for the Southern Bay area. So we envision as part of the overall master plan, two complementary zones. The first is the epicenter of entertainment, which utilizes 136 acres of the land on which we would develop with our partners an international standard theme park with state-of-the-art attractions and features. And this would include the possibility of a major global intellectual property partner. And then the second zone would be oriented to more outdoor family adventure activities, which includes gravity sports, fitness, and the nature exploration, which I think Select Projects was talking about. So our objective, working with the city of Gilroy, would be to craft a cogent master plan that brings together the geography, the architecture, the entertainment, and the unique culture of Gilroy. In addition, the overall concept has to be feasible, sustainable, and create a compelling destination asset. So next slide. So there are obviously many steps in achieving those kinds of goals. Excuse me, and this graph shows the basic project development steps that are required. Concept and initiation, definition and planning, execution, performance and control, and project close. And we could add a sixth one. We can also assist with the operations of the park and everything and any other resort activities once it's opened. So these are some, basically some preliminary phase deliverables that we're, you know, that are part of the overall planning process. Basically feasibility study, project vision, initial concept statements, scope and scope statements, creative direction, architectural, you know, development capital. And obviously, then we would create a Gilroy Project Information Synopsis, which gives options and, you know, to the overall concept. And then Phase One Deliverables, as part of the Phase One post the preliminary, we do a site and location assessment, vision statement, scope evaluation, and business case propositions. So and then Phase Two Deliverables, we would do obviously some concept creation and assessment, design development, master planning and architectural drawings and fly-throughs, quantity surveys, capital requirements, IP development, branding, project feasibility, and information memorandum for investment. So our team has been fortunate to work with a plethora of partners and clients in some of the most high-profile projects around the world. And we pride ourselves on the creativity and innovation we bring to every project we're involved with. Whether it's concept, feasibility, design development, attraction design, operations, or financing, we've basically done it all. And this is just a sampling of some of the clients and partners we've worked with over the years. So the success that we've had with our projects doesn't just happen. It's a combination of teamwork and inspiration and perspiration. And frankly, there are no shortcuts. Success really is a balance of creative thinking and commercial reality. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today. And ultimately, our main goal is to help transform Gilroy's vision for itself into a unique concept founded on realistic commercially attainable ideas. So that's the summary of everything.
Thank you. And you had three minutes left, and that's not even counting the technical difficulties in the beginning. So thank you, thank you both for keeping to your time. I'm going to go to council, yeah. I'm going to go to council now with questions, if that's all right. Okay, would you mind unsharing your screen so that I can see all the council members back?
You got it.
And I see Councilmember Marks' hand raised, and then Councilmember Armendaras. And that's all I see so far. So Councilmember Marks, why don't you go ahead and start while he's clearing the screen?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to clear.
I know. There, you got it.
Okay, I got it.
You got it. Okay, Councilmember Marks, followed by Councilmember Armendaras. You're on mute, Carol.
Peter and Kevin, you can chime in anytime as well, so.
Okay, here we go, thank you. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Chris.
Sure.
What do you envision for the gardens?
The gardens, it's interesting. I actually, when I was working at Knott's Berry Farm, I actually got to know Tamara Bonfante. She actually worked at the theme park. And Michael, her father, Michael was his name, I think, used to own it. And it's a couple decades ago. But, you know, I think the concept that the Bonfante's actually came up with was a really cool and interesting, you know, concept. I think the issue actually becomes, it really needs to have a clear identity and frankly, a brand that, you know, attracts international attention. And I think in bringing it up to a level where people can recognize intellectual properties and branding that we could actually bring to the table, could land it on that map and help us expand the overall marketability and sustainability of the park. And I see the gardens really as being a gateway to something larger that becomes more of a, kind of a, if you will, a city walk. It's a garden walk on your way to a much, a much larger commercially viable opportunity.
So would you bulldoze it?
No, we definitely wouldn't bulldoze it. No, we would, obviously, now, again, we haven't done a site survey. We haven't really seen anything, you know. I know we've done some, you know, Google drive-throughs and things like that. But I've never actually been to the park. So we would actually have to, you know, go in, make an analysis of if there are areas that could be potentially demolished and improved or added to. You know, that's something that would happen basically in the preliminary phases that we were talking about.
My vision of your vision is still pretty hazy. Read your first report. I understand you want to put in a big amusement park that I would assume would branch off from Gilroy Gardens, I guess. But then there's 536 acres. And I thought I heard you talk about 100 and some acres for the amusement park. What do you, if you take the 536, what do you have envisioned for the other acreage? I mean, you talked in general, but what specifically?
Well, the other acreage would be utilized for, honestly, something similar to what Select Contracts was identifying. We would basically, though, focus on gravity-driven attractions that would be, would be in addition to the overall, a separate, an actual separate thing from the theme park that would be more outdoorsy, more sports-oriented.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras.
Yes, thank you, Richard, for your presentation. And I'll ask you the same question I had for Select Contracts, and that is, what kind of give backs do you offer to the community in terms of discounted rates to enter the park, education for kids and people of the community, things like that?
Well, it would depend on, obviously, what we bring in into the park, what either attractions or intellectual properties we bring into the park. But we strongly believe in having an educational component to everything we do. It's a very important aspect to us. In terms of community give back, there is, obviously, one of the things is our jobs, which would be in the thousands of jobs if given the right, you know, given the right product. And then, of course, there would be, you know, some opportunities, you know, for promotional and, you know, ticketing and everything, special ticketing for the local community, you know, based upon events or special events and things that would be presented, you know, during the course of operations.
Okay, thank you. Did you have another question? You said thousands of jobs possibly. Do you pay competitive wages and provide benefits for those jobs?
Yes, of course. Yeah, that would go without saying. So we would, obviously, the entire operations would be covered just as like any other employer in the state of California.
Great, thank you, Richard.
Sure.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, so I will ask, do you see a lodging component to this?
Yes, of course. Yeah, we have actually hotel partners that we've worked with in the past that we could definitely tap into. And whether it's a, you know, international chain or a national chain, and we could work out some kind of, there may be an opportunity for them to obviously cover the cost of the construction and the operations of the hotel.
All right, thank you. All right, council, I think I will go to the public. I don't see anybody else's hand. Rebecca, your hand is up, but I assume you just haven't taken it down. Okay, so Suzanne, let's go to the public. I have no idea how many are there. I want to reiterate that we have not made, we're not, we haven't decided that we're going with either one. This is just meant to introduce the two companies. But certainly, anyone from the public who is here and wants to say something at this time, this is the time to do it. I am going to ask that comments be limited preferably to one to two minutes at this stage. Not longer than two. I will cut it off at two minutes each, and let's just go ahead and start.
All right, right now, we have 11 hands raised. The first one is going to be Kyle. I'm going to hit allow to talk. Please introduce your first and last name, Kyle. You are unmuted. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Kyle. I live in San Jose. I'm an avid cyclist. And an opportunity to have a project like this in the community and locally is amazing. This would be something that I would use weekly, monthly, very often. In terms of the actual proposals, at least from a first blush, it feels like the select proposal is a lot more, a lot further along and a lot more specific to a project that seems actually a lot more feasible for Gilroy to support. And so I would urge council to take a look at developing that proposal further. Thank you.
All right. All right, the next speaker is Susan. I will hit allow to talk now. Please introduce yourself to the city council. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Suzanne, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Blankley and City Council members and presenters. My name is Susan Mister, and I live just north of Gilroy Gardens. I am extremely excited about these proposals and the opportunity to recover from what has been a devastating year to the city, residents and businesses of Gilroy. This development can be an impetus to economic revival and one anchor towards the vision that you share with the Economic Development Partnership and goal towards Gilroy becoming a recreation destination. Having proposals like this addresses the fears and anxiety people may have in the future with indoor entertainment. With full support, I am concerned, though, about the uproar and challenges you may hear from my neighbors east of Gilroy Gardens. I understand their concerns about traffic, noise, lighting, etc., but I believe the benefits outweigh my personal preferences and hopefully theirs. I use Hacker Pass as my main route to town and will be inconvenienced even now with the roundabout work about to start, which, by the way, I think will be perfect for the this development because it will be a good traffic calmer when the development is approved. With that in mind, I encourage during the public outreach phases that there be sensitivity, acknowledging concerns, but emphasizing education and the advantages to our city and their quality of life. Explain the secondary and tertiary benefits, jobs, thriving restaurants, recuperating businesses, TOT from hotels, recovery through tourism. Help them to see this can be an answer to a flourishing downtown, perhaps an improved senior center, fire station, and more. I often ask residents, isn't it better to have people visit, spend their money, and then go home rather than worry about how and where the funds will come to cover city budget needs? I don't want a city sales tax increase, would they? Thank you for making a quick decision and moving forward with whichever project you decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next, we have Michael. I'm hitting allow to talk. Please introduce yourself to the council. You may unmute yourself, Michael.
Hi, Michael Town here. I'm one of the pioneers of bike parks. I introduced in 1995 the North Star Bike Park, which is one of our largest bike parks in North America. And I also started the longest running downhill race series in North America, still currently at North Star. So we are the longest running downhill series at 25 years. So this is a great idea. In our area, and I hope I get a little bit more into areas because a lot, two minutes, I got a lot to cover. We have a lot of industry support. We've got Wilderness Trail Bikes, Santa Cruz, IBIS, Fox, Rock Shocks. We've got a lot of companies in our area that do count on these type of areas for testing, industry liaison, events, stuff like that, and they're drying up in California. It's that simple. If you guys go look at Bootleg Canyon outside of Boulder City, they've got this almost exact same concept in place, the zip lines, the mountain bike park. It's amazing. We go there, you know, four times a year. It lacks a chair. That's the only thing we don't have. High school venues. We're lacking those too. I mean, right now in California, we're just essentially lacking venues. We are basically three hours from the nearest Lipdassis Mountain Bike Park. That's North Star. We got China Camp. They're kind of hit and miss. We got Sea Otter Classic, which is the largest mountain bike event in the West Coast, pretty much the US, from maybe second biggest. We lack a DH venue. We lack a downhill venue. We lack an enduro venue. Jobs. We've got a lot of local builders in the area. We got camp.
I'm sorry, it's been two minutes, Michael.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to really press the fact that like this is really needed in our community.
We got that.
Right now.
Right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
The next speaker is going to be Daniel Herrera. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Herrera. Thank you for both of the respondents for taking your time to present. I am a four year Gilroy resident, previously a born and raised in San Jose. And my wife and I decided to retire out here in Gilroy. One of the first things that I did was to go to the city's website and find the master plan 2040. I was very extremely excited to see how Gilroy at that time had decided to keep it a small town, local venue type city. I'm concerned that we may lose some of our existing branding as being garlic capital of the world, the wineries that we have. My address is Hacker Pass Road, a two lane highway. I'm concerned about traffic that might be generated. Now, select contracts did indicate that their full capacity would be somewhere around a 1,000, 1,500 maximum capacity per day. With the international branding that Imagine That has brought, I did not hear what their expected capacity would be for that particular day. Again, we have concerns about the noise, taking away the existence of the wineries and the other things that we have. One of the other things that my wife and I did was buy our mountain bikes. Again, in the master plan 2040, there's supposed to be a bike trail on the south side of 152 that would extend from Santa Teresa out to the Gilroy Gardens. Being born and raised in San Jose, Frontier Village was one of our main attractions growing up. And when we found Gilroy Gardens for my grandchildren, it became that treasure again. Let people go to Santa Clara for the high impact roller coaster rides. Leave Gilroy as a small community with a small feeling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Suzanne, next speaker.
Yes, the next one is going to be Elena Aker. I'm going to hit allow to talk now. Elena, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you. As you mentioned, my name is Elena Aker. I work in Morgan Hill and I live in San Jose. I'm a really big outdoor enthusiast, love mountain biking and cycling, all of that. And I would definitely visit this park multiple times a month, and I have many friends and coworkers who would do the same. Overall, I hardly think it would make a Gilroy a good destination since there are no places anywhere nearby, you know, in the couple hour perimeter nearby that have a similar type park. And many people in the surrounding area and in Gilroy now are very big outdoor enthusiasts. One thing I wanted to note, the first proposal for the bike park, I think, sounds like the best fit, select contracts. It does sound like select contracts is further along, has more of a specific plan. And also it just feels like the other contract is really grandiose, and it sounds like it has this really like grandiose plan that might become unaffordable for locals and select contracts feel like it might be the best and the right balance benefit for costs, but also for that balance of keeping Gilroy small and not overcrowded, but also having a bit of an attraction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. The next speaker is Michael Saint. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley and the council members. Michael Saint from Aptos. As Rich said, you are comparing apples and oranges. These are definitely different projects. My main concern, actually, two things, is the carbon footprint of these projects. Due to California's goal of decreasing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, neither one of these projects actually fit those goals, but I would feel that the project by Imagine That would be hugely responsible for increasing both of those significantly. Highway 101 has basically maxed out, especially on weekend tourism, going down to Monterey, as well as the outlet stores. And when I go over to Los Banes, do that occasionally. And my main thought is to try to avoid the Gilroy area. It's just usually backed up with traffic. The number of the people on the park on the adventure park, I think, is adequate. I think I do support that aspect in that project. The other project seems to be too huge for me, and I'm not a real fan of amusement parks anyway. So please consider that while you're considering both these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. The next speaker is going to be Gregory Podshadly. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself. Gregory, you may unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for taking my comments, Mr. Miss Mayor. I have been a resident of Gilroy for 36 years. And over the last 15 years, an avid road mountain bike rider, I've visited a number of different mountain bike parks on the East Coast and the West Coast, Killington, Thunder Mountain, Santa Cruz, Donnyville, and Whistler. And what I was impressed with with select contracts is the fact that they have a layout that already shows different types of skill levels. So you can go down a bunny hill, so to speak, and then you can do others. He also presented the fact that it's hidden in the trees. There's no reason to rip out the trees for any reason. And not not saying that the competing select, the competing group would do that, but you don't need to do that. And you can see that in Santa Cruz with many of the trails that are there. Having said that, there Gilroy is such a special place. It is nestled in between Enrico, Mount Madonna, Harvey Bear. And because it's so special, we have to take care to really do this right. And to make sure that it is a family kind of thing that surrounds the family atmosphere and the family tradition of Gilroy Gardens. And I just couldn't be more excited because you've also got specialized in Santa Cruz bikes that can come in here and and help build this thing to be even more so and more visible to the world. It's just incredible experience and incredible opportunity, and I I I'm so excited to hear that you're considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the next speaker is going to be the phone number ending in 3978. 3978, I'm hitting allow to talk now. You can unmute yourself, and please introduce yourself to the city council. 3978, are you there? Okay, let's move on to the next speaker. Oh, is someone there? I'll try allowing to talk one more time. 3978, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, there you are.
Ah, sorry. Okay, yeah. Hi, my name is Patrick Canode. I was born in Gilroy, raised in San Martin. I bought a house in Gilroy not too long ago. And I've noticed the area changed considerably in my lifetime. One of the things I've noticed is, you know, you used to go on a road trip, like if you take 152 to Costa de Fruta, and you come back, your car would just be completely covered in bugs. You had to wipe down your windshield halfway there and on the return trip. But lately, I can't remember the last time I've had to do that. You know, there's just been such a massive decline in insect population recently. So many of them depend on specifics, strange species of plants. So I'm really concerned that doing anything with this 500 acres of wilderness is going to be really devastating to the local wildlife population. I'd absolutely accept neither contract and just leave it as is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. The next speaker is going to be Joel Schrock. I am hitting allow to talk now, Joel. You may unmute yourself.
Hey, thanks for having me, and I appreciate hearing both the the proposals. And I'm just calling in to voice my support for the the adventure park. There's really there's really nothing like that, this side of Tahoe. And, you know, I don't know that, you know, you really want to have another me too kind of theme park, right? When there's quite a few of them available in the area. And mountain biking actually tends to be a pretty much bigger draw, right? You know, I'm up in Berkeley, right? So fair enough. I would want to drive there to go with with my six year old so that we could go and ride. Other there are other options out there are Tahoe, which is quite a long ways. And then it would just be great, especially because this type of theme park would or this type of adventure park would be open year round. The bike trails, the the largest boring high school sport right now is their mountain bike teams. And having the ability to do an enduro race there using the existing trails where they have to pedal up would be something where I can see that being a a good way to promote a healthy activity in your area. And and at the end of the day, I just think doing some sort of a park that promotes physical activity rather than standing in lines to go ride on roller coasters is probably a better idea. About it. But thanks for thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Leslie Chow. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
I am so glad that you're having this. You know, activity, and I am so excited. You're thinking about doing the bike park. I'm 64, not old enough for a vaccine, boo hoo, but I am really excited about the potential of having a bike park here in Gilroy because I live in Aptos. And for me to go to another bike park with the closest one, it'd probably be Truckee, is really four hours away. I know that I would go and my friends would go. This is really a wonderful thing, I think, for Gilroy and for the Central Coast to be able to have a really great opportunity for outdoor activities, both the mountain biking and the hiking. And actually, when I looked at the select presentation, the surf thing sounds awesome. So I would have to say that I would really encourage you to move forward with things. I'm so excited about this. I would also say that just having looked at the select versus the other one, I would see that I don't really understand why there's so much of a divergence, but the select one obviously seems way more detailed and thoughtful in terms of the actual trails and things, the marketing and the retail and the business model. I'm not really sure why the second one wasn't as detailed. It seems a lot more like hopes and dreams for me and not so much in terms of actual plans. So I would encourage you to, at this point, you know, unless there's some other thing I'm missing, to go with the select plan and to really proceed with going in. I think it would be a really great thing for the Central Coast, for me and my friends and old people like myself and young people and other people. I think it'd be a really fantastic opportunity. That's all I have to say. Happy to answer questions if you have any for me.
No, I know. You're at your two minutes, caller. Thank you. You're you're at your two minutes. I'm going to interrupt the public comment for just a second because I'm feeling the need to apologize to both of the companies who are here. I'm sure either one could deliver what we asked them to deliver. So for people who are calling in saying, I don't know why one says this and one says that, it's because of the level where we are. It's high level. We haven't got, we haven't narrowed that down. So while it is completely appropriate for you to call in and say what it is you would like to see for the area, please understand that both companies could undoubtedly deliver the same thing if that's what we asked for. So we're not at the level of trying to we we're not comparing apples and apples because each one just responded the way they responded to something that was very, very general. So I hope that you'll be sensitive to the fact that we are very, very fortunate to have two very viable companies looking at this property and considering doing something for the benefit of Gilroy. All right, let's continue with the comments.
Yes, the next speaker is going to be Maddie Tarzolo. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hi there. My name is Maddie. I'm I live in Oakland, and I'm a huge mountain biker. I'd like to voice my support for the mountain bike park. East Bay mountain bikers don't have a ton of mountain bike specific opportunities. So this would be a huge draw from me and others in my community to come down and enjoy the mountain bike park. With COVID, there have been so many more bikers and so many new bikers on the trail, and this sounds like an excellent opportunity for progression and learning and just getting more people involved in the sport. So thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, how many more hands are raised?
Right now, we have 11 more.
Okay, I would like to tone this down some. We're an hour and a half into this meeting already, and we haven't even actually gotten to the meeting. So given that this is not an action item and people have already sent in their emails and things, I would like to cut this down to one minute for the rest that that need to comment, unless you've got something different to add. for the rest that that need to comment unless you've got something different to add. All right. Suzanne, if we go ahead. The next one is Zach Martinez. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Zach Martinez. Thank you, council members, for having this meeting. I'd like to start by saying I'm from San Jose and I've I grew up going to Gilroy Gardens and was a big part of my childhood. I am a very avid mountain biker. It's my favorite thing to do, really. I drive the four-plus hours to North Star Resort multiple times a summer. And having a mountain bike park this close would be super, super good for the whole mountain bike community and the mountain bike community as well. Um, I would like to add that the mountain bike.
Okay. Thank you, caller. Thank you. All right. Next, next caller. The next caller is Lori. I'm hitting allow to talk. Please introduce yourself to the city council. Lori, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Lori Quintel, and my husband and I are residents of Gilroy. And we live off of Hacker Pass Road. And I would like to echo the concerns of other neighbors about the environmental impact to either of the parks as well as traffic. I doubt that Hacker Pass Road is going to be at anything ever more than a than a two-lane road. And Watsonville Road, the same thing. Both of those roads are already very crowded. And what I noticed is most of the people who are anxious to see this happen do not live here and would be traveling here and congesting our roads. And even the first presenter, aside from the mountain bike roads, was talking about a huge surf pool, which seems much more of an amusement-type ride rather than a natural setting. And so and talking about an additional hotel in addition to the cabins sounds much more like a big commercial enterprise rather than a family park. So I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is going to be Travis Taylor. Travis, I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. My name is Travis Taylor, and I'm from Morgan Hill. My family and I have enjoyed visiting Gilroy Gardens for many years. And we think the adventure park and Lister Mountain Bike Trails sounds like an amazing idea. Everything else I wanted to say has already been expressed by other speakers. And so I'll just ask that you continue to pursue this project and bring the adventure park to Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is going to be Mark Beauchamp. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm Mark Beauchamp. I've been a resident of Gilroy for the past nine years. I'm a local scout leader and an avid outdoor person and cyclist. I just wanted to to reemphasize that if you ever have visited any of our local parks, state park, county parks, any of those recently, ever since the pandemic started, people have been just frequently, I've been going to the parks and drove. I mean, the parking lots are full. There's people everywhere. People, I think, have adopted using our parks, using outdoor environments like that. And I think that's going to keep going. I mean, people have just gotten to love nature and gotten to be able to exercise and and be outdoor. So I think this is this is something that we dearly need at both for the 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 city, for the for the region. I think there'll be a fantastic addition and it'll be very much needed. I wanted to commend the select contracts for highlighting the fact that in their proposal, they they do will allow, they considered allowing people to hike up and bike up the park. I think that's a big component for those of us. We do not wish to access the lift, but would like to access the trail and look at the beautiful setting that we get from that side of mountain. I think that's a that's a really nice side of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, are the numbers going down or is it still going up with hands?
We're going down to eight now. We've had a couple more people raise their hands.
Right. So can we can I? I would like to be able to ask those who are not Gilroy residents, unless you've got something new to add. I understand that lots of people like bike riding and they want this, but we don't need to hear more of that. We've heard it. So if I would appreciate Gilroy residents who are here, unless you've got something new to tell the council to ask us to consider.
Mayor, we can't do that, mayor.
I don't support it either.
Council members, we're going to have to talk about how I I would like to run meetings, okay? Or I'm not asking people, I'm not shutting people down. But when you go out and solicit this number of comments that I know is what's happened here, and people think that this is an action item when it isn't, and we have quite an agenda to go through. This isn't something that we can keep. So I am continuing with public comment. But I am saying that this is going to be a procedure that I will be addressing differently when we're getting so many of the same comment. If this were in person, it wouldn't be happening this way. We would have cards filled out with people's names, addresses. We'd know who's speaking. Okay, I'm not trying to debate this.
Still ahead. Brown Act, though, mayor, we have.
We're going to continue with Suzanne. Thank you. The next speaker is going to be Lou Chiaramonte. I'm pressing allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Lou Shermonte, Jr. I'm a fifth-generation resident of the region and a founder of South Bay Indigenous Solidarity. In regard to either of these proposals, I would like the city to ensure that local indigenous representatives, in particular, the Amamutsun tribal band, are included in the decision-making process and approval process regarding the development of the city-owned land. Almost every development project impacts the remains of those who have lived in this area for thousands of years. Regardless of scale, any development of this land could possibly destroy archaeological and burial sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. The next caller is Lucas Martinez. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, thanks for having me. I live in the area and I drive up to North Star Mountain Bike Park often every summer. Just like to say that it would be super awesome to have something really close that I don't have to give a big ecological impact just to go ride my bike, having something in my backyard would be super, super sweet, especially all year round. I work at a bike shop, too, and I've seen a very, very, very large increase in mountain bike king. I never did it before. I'm having a backyard to bring business to the area would be super, but super awesome. I don't know if there's a huge need for the water park aspect, but bike trails, heck yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, that that name looked like a repeat. So I'm just trying to make sure we're not.
No, that was not a repeat.
Okay, thank you. The next person speaking is the phone number ending in zero seven zero three. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself. Zero seven zero three, you may unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Diego Torres. I've been a Gilroy resident all my life, born and raised. I actually live off of Hacker Pass. I just wanted to let everyone know about all the animals that live out there and how this will impact them. When I come home, I see deer running around. I've seen snakes. I've seen cougars. I hear the coyotes at night. So I really, I really like the idea of outdoor biking park and all that. That sounded really cool. But now that I've seen or been introduced to the two companies and heard of a little bit of both sides, both sides made very valid points. But I've noticed that a lot of people encouraging this park are from outside of Gilroy. But either way, I'll be happy with whatever happens. Thank you, council members, for having me and listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. The next speaker will be Kelly. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Kelly.
Hello, my name is Kelly Ogier, and I am a Gilroy resident and an outdoor enthusiast. I have two children and a husband here. And I think that the proposed adventure park would provide an experience that now requires California mountain bikers to travel as far away as Tahoe, Mammoth, or Shasta. You know, I've followed and seen firsthand the growth and popularity as well as the impact of mountain biking on communities. Residents would build meaningful social bridges across differences in age, race, ethnicity, class, culture. And I know the Gilroy City Council strives to ensure that its initiatives benefit all demographic groups. And this proposal does just that. You know, it's not just another proposal. Gilroy's bike-friendly community. And this adventure park supports the twenty-eighteen Tourism and Hacker Pass Quarter Resolution as well as many components of the Gilroy twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Strategic Plan as well. And so it would be extremely lucrative to this community. But it's also a community benefit with mental health and many other elements that go into this. I have two questions. My first question would be to select contracts. I'd like to know with all the prominent bicycle industry entities and other large corporations that you work with, if you believe you'd have trouble securing funding for the project. And I'd also like to ask the city council when they do believe this would become an action item. I know that select contracts from listening, you know, they have invested five years of their time, energy, and money in this program. And obviously, they're invested in our community. And that's why I heavily promoted tonight's meeting. I'm not sure that your council members did, but I know I did. So I'd like to know from you when it's going to be an action item and from select concepts, if they feel like there's going to be any trouble getting funding for this.
All right, thank you. We do have answers to those, the next steps. Those are things that maybe we'll address when we're finally done with the public comments. All right, next comment. The next is going to be Mary. Mary, I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Mary Shaw Coron. I'm with Preserve Our Rural Communities. I actually live in Aromas myself, not too far from you folks. But I, the reason I'm speaking is because I'm very concerned about the wildlife corridor. I don't know if you're aware, but mountain lions, for example, are being tracked by the Puma Project, UC Santa Cruz Puma Project. And so having things, I mean, I'm very supportive of outdoor activities myself. I'm being, I'm a very outdoors person, and mountain biking is certainly one of the good things, very healthy. But unfortunately, things like a ski lift and having lots of people come aggregating, I don't know if it's going to be, you know, a lot of noise, lights and stuff, but that's very disruptive to wildlife, especially mountain lions, which are actually going to be listed on the Endangered Species Act, I think. So I I really hope that whatever you folks develop, you really think about the impact on wildlife. And of course, the neighbors in the area, this is, you know, if you are bringing people from all over the region, it could be very disruptive. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. The next speaker is Brian Schmidt. I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Brian Schmidt with Green foothills, representing our members in Gilroy and elsewhere throughout the region. Just to say that we hope you move carefully and slowly on this proposal. There will be significant environmental impacts associated with this. Our region has endured a lot of environmental impacts. We don't need to do more of them. So please be careful and please consider those environmental impacts closely. And I'll just add that I personally am a mountain biker, and I've really enjoyed biking at Enrico State Park. So there are plenty, plenty of alternatives out there to consider at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next. That was the final public speaker. Oh, yay. All right, then with that, Jimmy, can I go back to you to just ask for a timeline for the public on where we go from here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we, the city did a press release and also has up on its website the exact months that this is going to occur. But to give everybody kind of a feeling, just the overall plan and how it will work, is that we'll continue to work with both imagine that and select contracts. And we have interviews with them. We're vetting their companies. And then staff will eventually make a recommendation to council as to which one to move forward with through an exclusive negotiating agreement. And we do that so then both companies aren't spending a ton of resources and money presenting and working on this when they know that they're not even being considered. That doesn't mean we can't go back to the other one, but we just let the other company pause. And at that point, both proposals have pretty extensive public outreach, community meetings, and opportunities for anyone who wants to, regardless of standing or what have you, to have input. So I do believe we will have something to counsel about entering it into E and A in the next two to three months. And then however we move after that, we will outline that process at that time.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody who who made a comment. Thank you to council. Thank you to our presenters. Thank you for showing interest in Gilroy. We are very, very, very appreciative to have you to have this discussion over. Thank you very much. We now will move on to item four, which is reports of council members. Council member Braco.
Yes, few things. The Gilroy Library has opened back up. People can check out books and return books. And I'll be working to hire the the new county deputy librarian. They asked me to be part of that. So I'll be on that that group. And then I wanted to address something that people have been calling me on, and they're posting a lot of stuff online that the city of Gilroy doesn't do anything for the homeless and is not helping the homeless community. So in the last year, Gilroy has spent over two million dollars funding organizations like the Gilroy Compassion Center, St. Joseph's, Meals on Wheels, Project Sentinel, the Gilroy Chamber, to help with things like small business grants, rent relief, food distribution, healthcare services, and senior nutrition. So the community needs to know that we are doing things all the time. And I also wanted to, Councilmember Marx will be given the report of our subcommittee, but I wanted to touch on something. I wanted to thank the Compassion Center. We met with our service providers and the trash came up. And the Compassion Center took it upon themselves to start handing out blue garbage bags and having them picked up once a week. And you can see the difference that the that it's looking better around town. And they they hauled a lot of trash away. So thank you to the Compassion Center.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Armand Darius, your report.
Sure. So the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, we met, we approved a fifteen-year purchase of solar energy plus storage from a company out of Tulare. Also, there was an audit. The financial report came back clean. Unfortunately, there's going to be lower revenue because PG&E is increasing its cost to customers. But the Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy will still continue to discount energy for its customers using their reserves to the effects of four million dollars. I also participated in a press conference on behalf of the the mayor and council about our doses, the doses that our county won't be receiving as a result of a state decision to not prioritize our communities or those parts of our community that are considered hardest hit because of our rate of infection and and death. And so almost no zip codes, no counties in Northern California at all received additional doses. So unfortunately, our county right now is left with only enough doses to cover people for second, for their second vaccination, and we won't be receiving another lot until the end of the month. Except for what we may be getting as from the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So we're in a really precarious situation. And we're meeting with our state legislators and putting pressure, which is what the purpose of the press conference was, to put pressure on them to reassess the formula that they use to get to determine that. And on another note, I'd like to say that our city isn't doing enough for the homeless. We do have Project Sentinel Meals on Wheels, Senior Nutrition St. Joseph's, those don't provide direct service to the homeless, right? Project Sentinel helps with prevention. But Meals on Wheels, Senior Nutrition St. Joseph's, the main point of those services are nonprofits, and it's great that we contribute to those as we should. But Compassion Center, Pit Stop Outreach, the work that they do is largely funded by other people. And our our community, our city, isn't doing nearly enough for our homeless population, including protecting them. And our, our community, our city isn't doing nearly enough for our homeless population, including protecting them, protecting them from, from being displaced again. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Downtown Business Association, with the pandemic, the revenue has been down for 2020, but with careful spending, they're going to be able to weather the storm. Good news though, is that building owners are getting calls by interested people who want to sign leases to open up businesses. So hopefully we will start to see an upturn. However, there are some rumors that a couple of our larger businesses downtown are thinking of closing their doors. That's the bad news. This past Thursday, our homeless ad hoc committee met with Rebecca Garcia, housing manager from Morgan Hill, to get her perspective on Destination Homes' plan to end homelessness. That's all I'm going to say about that until we have our study session and then you'll get more of the details. Tim Davis from the Compassion Center came to discuss a safe parking program for a couple of church sites. The program is strictly run, it's run by the Compassion Center. But again, that's private property. We have to wait for a church or a person to offer his or her parking lot in order to do that. The maximum they have are eight cars. They take families who are close to being, getting jobs. And I let me, let me start with that. They only take eight families and these are families who are really close to being housed permanently. Most of those families already have jobs and they are working towards getting out of the homeless status. There's a lot of details that go into safe parking. I'm not going to take our time tonight talking about it, but Tim will work with these people if they're interested. This coming Friday, Robert Reavis is meeting with Mark Turner, business owners in our ad hoc committee over Zoom to discuss major issues that business owners are having with the homeless and what can be done to resolve the issues. And when I say with the homeless, I'm not talking garbage, I'm talking criminal element. I'm talking about assaults on some of the customers that are going to these businesses. It's, it's gotten bad out there, folks. We're going to be talking about some immediate and permanent results for the businesses. Because when we start hearing comments that customers are not going to return to Gilroy, they're going to spend, they're going to spread the bad PR, that is hurting our city. And I feel, and I'm only speaking for myself right now, but I feel our hands are so tied on this issue that we are not getting anything done. So Councilmember Armandaris, if you have some suggestions, I would love to hear from you because we are running out of ideas. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Plenty of suggestions, Carol.
Yeah, yeah, not here. Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blenckley. So I just want to make a special mention to Ashme, Local 101, and everyone that has been consistently showing up in person at the Public Works Yard. Those essential jobs and essential services they provide to our residents are key to taking care of an aging city. Streets, sewers, trees and more require hands-on during the day, night, rain or shine. Simply can't be managed from the comforts of their home on Zoom. So thank you to them for their service. I also want to say thank you to the leadership classes at Christopher High School. I got to drop in on a few of those classes and talk about homelessness, the 536 Development in Hecker Pass in my student internship program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had the opportunity to, to attend the news conference on the vaccination and distribution. And I want to thank our mayor and also our councilwoman Armandaris for the work that you guys have been doing on that. And appreciate the advocacy that you're doing for, for Gilroy residents. I also want to send a, a thank you to Mr. Mark Turner from President of the Chamber. A few days ago, I got a call from someone who is very interested in opening up a new business in downtown. And he's the first person to reach out with, so he, with this individual. And we're hoping that they're going to move forward and open up a new, a new business in downtown. So I want to thank him for that because again, I think the work that they do is tremendous and should be acknowledged. Also, another shout out to Mark Turner as well. I also had a lengthy conversation with him regarding the homeless issue. And that sort of triggered the invite for, for the homeless ad hoc committee to be invited to the meeting with our Assemblyman Robert Reavis. So again, thank you to Mark for all the work he does for the residents of Gilroy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember La Roman Yost.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick update, the Mobility Partnership met last week. That is of course, the collective body of elected officials from San Benito County and Santa Clara County, or select representatives from each of those counties. We're talking about a variety of different traffic infrastructure projects throughout the region. We spent a good deal of time last week talking about the Highway 25 101 interchange and what impacts that could have to Gilroy. Very specifically, that will result in a closure of Mesa Road as well as Castro Valley, which would have a significant impact on Gavilan College and the students traveling both to and from that campus. So members of VTA and other regional transportation authorities are meeting with Gavilan Administration to try to figure out how we can mitigate those impacts. Because without those two access points, that traffic from student is going to have to go through the city in a way that it was not originally intended for. So that is something we're looking at. We also received a report on the high-speed rail and the update. There's not a whole lot to update there, only that there is a renewed sense of optimism from the High-Speed Rail Authority, given the Biden Administration's overtures regarding transportation infrastructure. So they continue to believe that this is a project that will, that will continue to move forward. We know there've been some high-profile op-eds in the papers lately about this. We will, we'll wait to see and I'll update people as we get more information.
Thank you. Yes, and I attended the Mobility Partnership meetings with Councilmember La Roman Yost and wanted, I, I think there was a time when I told the public that you could expect to see some, something actually happening with the 25 interchange. And now that's not really scheduled to start happening until July of 2023. And that is because of trying to work out this Castro Valley Road Mesa closure that they're having to reroute. So that is something I wanted to be sure and mention tonight, that probably not until July of 2023, but we actually see anything happening there. The good news is it is funded, that it is going to happen, that interchange is going to improve. And then we've got to address what Mayor Constantine refers to as the hourglass that we still have on 101. You know, as people now can easily get on 101, but then it narrows before you can actually move into what is four lanes as you get past Cochran. We're getting there, folks. I want to say thank you to those who acknowledge the end of our 150th year celebration, March 12th marked the end of that. And then I wanted to bring to our attention, you know, I addressed the council norms for all of us early on in, in all, in our councilship, we'll call it, so that we could all have a good understanding of what, what things we were going to abide by. I would like to ask members of the public, if you don't already, please subscribe to the city's newsletter. Go online to the website and subscribe. It comes out every week and that is where you will get city news from the city. When you're hearing things from individual council members, it isn't necessarily from the city. And we're, I'm seeing issues of, of appearances that makes the public think that, that it's a city-sponsored thing that you're doing, or that you're speaking on behalf of the city, or that an internship program is for the city when it's not. And certainly you can't use the city's seal on your own personal things. That is, that's a city thing, city-sponsored event. So I'm reiterating for all of us here, some who know, some who are still maybe feeling the waters out, to please appreciate the fact that only a council majority speaks for the city. And what you're doing on your own needs to be clear to the public as you doing on your own. And when it comes to vaccinations, we're all working towards that. The city staff has been very involved. Our problem is not distribution, it's getting the vaccine supply. And that, that is where we stand on that. So please subscribe to the city's newsletter to get city information. All right, moving on to agenda item five, future council-initiated agenda items. Do we have any? I see a hand raised by Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blenckley. So I'm requesting to place the City Code Chapter 16 offenses miscellaneous amendment to add safe storage of firearms with possible action to adopt by ordinance for a goal of reducing gun violence and improving gun safety for everyone on a future agenda. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start. Councilmember Bracco, do you want to go first or you want me to?
Sure, I'll go first.
Go ahead, all right.
Um, first of all, firearms do not cause suicide. Suicide is a whole different issue caused by a lot of problems in our society. Just going online, a quick search, you find that PC 25100 of the penal code states that if you have children around, the gun has to be in a locked safe or lockbox or trigger lock.
The point of order, Mayor, sorry.
What point of order?
Point of order that we have discussed this before and that we're not supposed to discuss the merits of these proposed agenda items during this section of the agenda. But just, and it sounds like that's where Councilmember, actually it is what Councilmember Bracco is doing.
I'm sorry, okay.
Why I'm voting no on it. I don't cut you off and I'd appreciate it if you don't cut me off.
It's a point of order, it's a parliamentary procedure, right? Because we're not following.
Well, then we'll let our city attorney speak to that, okay? We don't need individual council members acting as our, as our attorney there.
We do.
No, Councilmember, I will run the meeting, thank you. Okay, I do appreciate your efforts, but I will run the meeting. Andy, if you've got, if you would like to interrupt the council member who is speaking inappropriately, please do.
I'm not sure I would, I would put it that way, but what I would say is that we've had this discussion before. It's a fine line because in order to decide whether to put the item on the agenda, there has to be a little bit of discussion about it. But Councilwoman Armandaris is correct, we're not supposed to have an extended discussion of the merits because that would happen if and when the item is put on the agenda. But a brief explanation of why the council member is voting yes or no is appropriate. But that's really all that's appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco, please continue.
So shortly, do a brief search, you'll find out more children are killed on bicycles every year in California than by firearms. They're killed by drunk drivers more, way more than firearms. And the reason California did what they did is because it's unenforceable. You can't tell what someone's doing inside their house. So enacting an ordinance that doesn't do anything is about as useful as a flashlight without batteries. It just doesn't work. So that's the reason I'm going to be voting no.
Thank you. Does anyone else, I, I have my own comments. Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm going to say that we were, I was contacted by one of the callers here tonight over a month ago, and I believe she even said in her call that she had emailed all of us, it wasn't just me. And I did my own looking into that with the chief and I will not be supporting this either. I don't need to say any more reasons for it because we're not supposed to go into details, but it is basically unenforceable without going into someone's home. We have five penal codes at the state already. Councilmember Marks.
And I will also say that I'm not supporting this either because I did my research this weekend and California has some of the strictest gun laws. In fact, it is the, the number one state out of all 50 that have the most strict gun laws. And as I hear the speakers talking, you know, if you can just punch in five numbers on a safe to get a gun, I don't know where you want to store these guns because I would assume it is a safe. And our penal code says the guns have to be stored in either a gun safe or have a, a trigger lock.
Okay.
You can, okay, but I guess I just want to make it clear to the people because I know the public's going to be really upset.
Yeah, I just don't want us to get into too much detail. All right, then I say one more thing. Go ahead. All right. I think people have to understand it's the, the homeowner that has to be responsible for what he or she has in the house. And I agree with Councilmember Bracco. Who's going to go in and make sure that they're following the laws? We don't need another ordinance. California has a law on safe storage and I want us to follow the state. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate the willingness to bring this discussion up or possible action item. And you know, I did, I did some research on that and yeah. Main concern is obviously how sort of this ordinance would be sort of step forward in regards to, you know, if people, you know, are inside their, their homes, how, how would take, what actions would happen in regards to, to the ordinance. But the other thing too, in regards to what I think that we as a city have been doing is, is pretty good. I mean, we've had, we, we have had a gun buyback program and I believe, and I don't know if the chief is here, but we also gave out gun locks, you know.
300, 300 gun locks, yes, in this last one.
For me, that's more action than an ordinance, you know, and I would always be, always be willing to continue sort of pushing for that to get those guns, you know, off the street or out of people's houses. So I'm a little cautious in regards to an ordinance and what that would do to private residents. So that's sort of my concern. But again, you know, the will of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandaris and then Councilmember La Roman Yost.
I, I think that many, many of our laws and policies and ordinances have to do with what people do behind closed doors. So I think it's a, it's an unreasonable standard to say that we can't, this seems unenforceable because it's done behind closed doors and there's no way for us to do it or see it. But many, many things that, that we have laws about are, are, are done behind closed doors, right? And so to give enforcement any teeth of anything, we have to make an ordinance, we have to legislate it. And I think this is incredibly reasonable and it's another way to protect children from accidents. Too many children, one child lost to this is too many. And we've had that happen in our community in recent years. And so I think I'm, I'm 100% supporting this.
Okay, Councilmember La Roman Yost.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I think, you know, I think it's safe for me to say that, you know, I join everybody on council in saying that no one wants to see any unnecessary loss of life to, to gun violence. I, I think we can all recognize that we feel that same way here. You know, having done some of the research on this and, and interacted with, with other law enforcement on this. You know, again, the California Penal Code already addresses this issue. The challenge, I think, for, for us right now is having already done the gun buyback, buyback program we did a couple of years ago and then the gun lock, you know, provision to, to, to gun owners. We've kind of done those steps and I think legally looking at it, there are some challenges with the enforcement and just the, the sheer feasibility, feasibility of actually trying to implement something like this. So certainly preventing gun violence, we've, we've explored that. We are, we work towards that and we're going to continue to do that. But there are challenges just legally with this ordinance that, that make it impracticable, I think, beyond what the, the state code is there. And I think given our difficult situation we're in right now, coming out of a pandemic, when we have a lot of other city resources that we need to put to use, addressing issues like our street, the, the pandemic recovery, the economic recovery, homelessness. I think with those limited resources, we really need to focus those at this time. So I will not be supporting the, the, the motion for the ordinance.
Thank you. Couldn't have said that better. Okay, so with that, I would like to say thumbs, thumbs up if you're supporting, thumbs down if you are not, so that we can know what we're doing. So I see two thumbs up and five thumbs down. If we need to know for the record, the up, it was Hilton and Armandaris. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. I'm not going to ask each time if there's something to remove. If somebody raised your hand or shout out if there's something on the consent count, okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, moves approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, the Councilmember La Roman Yost, so I have a motion and a second. I guess I, wait, are there any public comments, my champ Suzanne, on consent?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comments.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar roll call, please.
Rebecca Armandaris.
You're on, you're on mute?
Rebecca Armandaris. I. Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Roman Yost.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blenckley.
Yes. All right, and that's unanimous. Business proposals, item 7A, award a con- Award a contract to Silicon Valley Group Incorporated for the ranch site building and trailer demolition project. Number twenty-one PW two six three, and approve a project expenditure of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And this will be by Gary Heatt, yes?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Let me set this up quickly here for us. Let me share the screen. There. Sharing. You guys can see this, okay?
Yes.
Fantastic.
We can see it.
Alright, well, good evening. I have for you this evening, yes, the award of the contract to the Silicon Valley Group for the ranch site building and trailer, trailer demolition project. Let's try that again. The project location you see here in orange is adjacent to the Miller Red Barn within Christmas Hill Park. You see Glen Loma, you see Santa Teresa and Uva, so you get a general sense of where this site is and these buildings and where they exist. The ranch site building and trailer has a pretty good history that goes back a number of years. The building itself, the house was built in the nineteen fifties, and the trailer itself is from the nineteen ninety-six era. It's actually a construction trailer left over from the DeBalle Uva's Creek Park Preservation Restoration Project. And it's sat fallow since that project was completed several years ago. Both structures are beyond repair, uninhabitable, unsellable, and have become a significant attractive nuisance to the city over the past several years. This project will eliminate these potential health and safety hazards and reduce the city's liability. In October twenty, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty, the city advertised this project in the San Jose Mercury News and City website. We conducted a pre-bid site tour on November second, and got a lot of good feedback from the potential bidders. We did open, open the bids in January of this last, of this year. And then staff received three responsive bids. The lowest responsive bid was from Silicon Valley Group. Their total bid was for fifty-one thousand one oh eight and twenty-one cents. We're asking for a ten percent contingency to be added to the project for five thousand one hundred eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents, and also the cost of the Gilroy demolition permit, a thousand fifty dollars, for total project cost of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. This project will be funded out of Capital Projects Fund four hundred. With that being said, staff would like to recommend to the council to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments. And also award a contract to Silicon Valley Group in the amount of fifty-one thousand one oh eight and twenty-one cents with an additional, additional project contingency of five thousand one eleven and seventy-nine cents for a total construction cost of fifty-six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And also a one thousand and fifty dollar amount for the City of Gilroy demolition permit for total project cost of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars for the ranch site building and trailer demolition project number twenty-one PW two sixty-three, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. That concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Alright, Gary, I, I have to say, I don't know if it's the, the COVID look or whatever, but I just binge watched Harry Potter yesterday, and I just could, all I thought of was Hagrid, I think that's how he says his name, you remind me. Alright. I mean, I just kept looking at him going, gosh, I see Gary in there.
I think, I, I hope you haven't started something, Mayor, I really hope.
We still respect you, Gary, don't worry.
Alright, council, does anyone have any questions of Gary before I go to public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment. Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now, or raise your hand. We have no public comments.
Alright, back to council. I don't see any hands.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second by Councilmember Marks. Suzanne, are you gonna, is this one you have to read? No. Okay, this is a motion to, to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year twenty to twenty twenty-one, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments. Okay, roll call.
This is resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Dion, you're muted.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romano.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blakely.
Yes. Alright, and then I need a motion and a second to award a contract to Silicon Valley Group Inc. in the amount of fifty-one thousand one oh eight point two one with an additional project contingency of five thousand one eleven point seven nine for a total construction cost of fifty-six thousand two twenty and one thousand fifty for a City of Gilroy demolition permit for a total project cost of fifty-seven thousand two seventy for the ranch site building and trailer demolition, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents.
Don't move.
Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember La Romano. Roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Oh, sorry, okay, Armandaris.
Yes, and thank you, Fred.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romano.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blakely.
Yes. Alright, public hearings, none, unfinished business. Standing report on operational impacts and city community efforts related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is our report. Chief Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give a, some good news, is that we're still moving forward in giving vaccinations to the community. I know that there's been a shortage of vaccines, and we are still giving the second dose. So that's, that's still ongoing. And in fact, the county has said, even though they're not taking new appointments just yet, they are finishing up the second doses. This Wednesday, the County Health and the city are partnering together to give about three hundred and seven second doses. And then next week, we'll be joining forces with Valley Health over at the Gilroy High School and providing curbside assistance to those with disabilities who really can't get out, out of their cars and up the, the steep walkway to the vaccination center at the, at the gym at the high school, so we'll be actually piloting a program to vaccinate people within their cars who have disabilities. Beyond that, we are also, we just recently got approval last week from County Health to begin vaccinations with our mobile ambulance, mobile vaccination ambulance. And we're gonna be utilizing crews of two paramedics to go, go to the homes of people who are homebound, unable to actually get out of their homes and come down to get their vaccine. Of course, all of this is contingent on the Johnson and Johnson vaccine becoming available to us, but we feel pretty confident that we'll start probably by this Thursday, Friday at the latest. And I'll just also add that right now, the county has vaccinated about nineteen percent of the population, the adult population, which is a big plus, but there's a long ways to go. And your, your city and the fire department, well, the fire department and the city together will continue to advocate and provide the vaccine as soon as it becomes available. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to reiterate that too. Again, we, the city is doing so much to help with this vaccine distribution. I, I do want to thank Councilmember Armandaris, thank you for the outreach that you are doing to members of our community to improve, you know, to improve how we reach all the different sections and, and knowing certain populations that are just fearful and trying to reach them. It's just that, when, when it's, it needs to come from you personally, because coming from the city, then we get, why is it just Father Rubio and not all the other religious organizations? So that's where it starts to tread. What you're doing is fabulous, but it, it, it has to come from just you and not the city, unless we are opening it to everybody and all parts of our community and all the cultures and all the people and all the everythings that are here, but thank you for what you are doing.
You're welcome, Mayor, and, and thank our chief and our firefighters and our city and county staff for doing such a tremendous job. Jimmy and Adam, I mean, they're just leading the way and, and making things so welcoming, right, so that we can get our, our vaccines out to our, to our folks.
Great. Okay, so does anyone have any questions for Chief Wyatt? Over here, okay. Or is there any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It does appear we have one public comment. This is Diana. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Dana Howrigie, I'm a, I'm, I'm a resident here in Gilroy, so I do want to thank those efforts for you guys, the council and everyone, in reaching those individuals that are homebound, and I would definitely urge you guys to be able to put that on the city website, so when I work with my clients who are homebound, who are elderly out in Gilroy community, I can refer them to the link or help them complete this, so they could get their vaccine in the home, because a lot of them don't have transportation. We have those that are in the senior communities and senior apartments that are homebound, so thank you for all those efforts. So if you guys could please put that accessible in the city website in both languages, Spanish, English, Vietnamese, that way we can reach all different languages. Thank you so much.
Noted, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B. Introduce draft policy recommendations to regulate electronic billboards in the City of Gilroy. Right, and for that, I'm going to Cindy, right? Cindy McCormick, are you giving this report?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, staff will be presenting the city council with draft policy recommendations that would allow off-site electronic billboard signs in the City of Gilroy. Currently, the sign regulations prohibit off-site advertising signs and illuminated signs with changeable text or images. The city also has restrictions on height and sign area that would need to be amended. The, the city council first discussed the possibility of allowing electronic billboards in September of last year. The council had several questions, comments, and concerns regarding the maximum number, the maximum height, and the potential location of such signs. The council also wanted to ensure that any such signage would prevent, would benefit the city's auto dealerships and regional shopping centers. The council packet includes a number of recommendations regarding off-site versus onsite, public versus private property, city agreements and permit processes. The staff report also discusses conformance hearings, requiring city branding on the billboard, and requiring a minimum number of public service announcements each month. Staff has provided recommendations on where the signs should be located, how close they should be to the freeway, and angling away from residential and hotel uses. Finally, the staff report includes recommendations on the maximum number, maximum height, and maximum sign area for each face of the billboard. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We also have Jeff McEwen from Outfront Media this evening to answer any questions that you have.
Alright, thank you. Okay, council, I see Councilmember Hilton with the hand raised, so we'll, we'll go to him. I don't see any others raised yet, and so, Councilmember Hilton, go ahead.
Thank you, Marie Blakely. Cindy, have you ever seen a CEQA like report talk about light mitigation and those kind of measures they have to take with these, because some can be really, really bright, and especially at night. Have you ever seen any, any of that?
Yes, so cities, we would require an environmental analysis for the zoning amendment, and that could take the form of an environment in, in impact report or something lesser than that. We wouldn't be able to know what that end product would be until we actually do the analysis. But yes, those type of reports do look at light, pollution, illumination, and the sort of impacts.
And, and they would go to like wildlife and those that live around it, and the hotels and that kind of stuff, too? It, it, is that, is that done at a staff level, or is that something that's brought back for us?
So we would typically hire a consultant to do that environmental analysis.
Okay, anybody include all those items, or that has to be chosen by staff?
Yes, so that would include things like lighting, any kind of biological, potential biological impacts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cindy, could you do me a favor, please, and turn off the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I, I can't see all councilmembers right now. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at the moment, though, so I'm gonna go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council.
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It does appear we have one public speaker, that will be Daniel Herrera. I am hitting allow to talk now. Daniel, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, this is Daniel Herrera, and I apologize for coming in late on this particular subject. Just a curiosity, is these electronic billboards, are, will they be allowed to be used for emergency services or public announcements as deemed necessary?
Yes. One of the recommendations would be to allow public including, for example, COVID.
Thank you.
Yeah, my understanding is there's a reserved spot of the sign for city uses. Yeah. Okay, there's some background noise happening. Mister, is it for Mr. Herrera? Does he need to be muted now? I can mute him. Or yeah, okay. Alright, are there any other public comments?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine now or raise your hand. It appears we do not have any more public comments.
Okay, back to council. We need to give staff direction on this, because you know, we've had, this has come before us before, and then it's been postponed twice because because of the fact that we don't really have this kind of straight in our own mind, so I'll start with Councilmember Bracco, since I see your hand.
Well, do we have any kind of idea what the proposal's gonna be? How, how tall they want it, how big they want it? Do we know that yet?
So we do have Jeff McEwen on the line, he's here, he can answer any questions that you have. Jeff, are you able to?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Jeff McEwen with Outfront Media. Early, we're early on into this stage, obviously, we've, we've, we've come together with the property owner, with the city for a site near the auto mall, and currently, we're looking at probably a sixty-five foot height on the structure.
Okay. For me personally, I, I, it doesn't matter how, how tall it is, how bright it is. It's for advertising, so I'm gonna support it anyway, so staff, just go ahead and move forward and come back with something more concrete for us to approve. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, sort of thinking this through, and I, I'm glad that Councilmember Hilton asked the question, especially about the lighting. The only concern I had, and, and I'm in favor of this, obviously, because of the branding, Cindy, of our city, so I appreciate that aspect of it, and I think it, you know, just driving on the freeways, you'll see, you'll see similar signs like this with the city names on there, and it just really appeals. But if you go down one oh one and eight eighty, sort of the turnabout there, there's a really big one there, and late at night, it is the brightest thing you'll ever see, and it, it's very hard on, I, I do that drive at night, and sometimes you can't even see if there's cars in front of you or what's going on, so that's the only concern I have, given where it's gonna be located. I just worry that, you know, again, I don't want to see future issues with accidents or people not, you know. So I think that's the only concern I have, and I'm sure that can be addressed. But again, I'm in favor of it, I think it, it'll do good for the city, but I, I just worry about the, the lighting aspect of the sign. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember La Romano, and then I see Councilmember Armandaris has her hand up, okay?
Yeah, to, to Councilmember Tovar's point, I mean, that's a fair point about, you know, the night, the, the night vision or the impact to night vision of drivers. And I make, I make that trip up there all the time, because that's near where I work, or I used to make the trip all the time. So I'm very familiar with that sign that Councilmember Tovar is talking about. I just want I just wonder, as we get further information, and I am supportive of this at this stage, but as we get further information, it'd be interesting to know if, similar to how your cell phone works, you have a setting, you can put it on the night vision where it actually lowers the luminosity later in the evening, so it's not quite as a jarring experience when it's darker. Just seeing if that's at all possible or something that might be taken into account. But by and large, I view this as something that is positive at this stage, the branding opportunity, but also the fact that we have to recognize that just about eight miles to the north of us, Morgan Hill is really investing very heavily in their own auto district as well. And so it's a tight, you know, competition that the two of us are in. So whatever we can do to kind of help our own businesses here in Gilroy, I think we have to take a look at that very seriously.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to see a limit on the number of signs that we have if we agree to them that they be on private land, not on public land. I know if they are on public land, it gives us a little bit more leeway in terms of their content and accessibility, right, to the public and our own messaging. And also, I mean, there's pluses and minuses to all of it, right? But I think I prefer it to be on private land, that we restrict the number of signs that can be built in the, in the community within our city limits, that they have height, visibility, and illumination restrictions, like Councilmember LaRoma Yos was mentioning. And Tovar is that at certain times of the night, they are overwhelming, right? And they impair your vision when you're driving, especially if it's late at night. And they also can be a distraction. They've proven to be a distraction if they have too much text, things like that. And they disrupt us as human beings and also the wildlife that's around them. So I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we keep the parameters tight on this if we allow for them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If no one else, I'll go ahead and speak too. But did I go to the public yet on this? I can't remember. I did? Okay, I came back already. Okay, good. So then I'll make, I'll make my comments. I have nothing against signage itself either, or the height or whatever. I do think we need to establish what those parameters are. My personal feeling is that we shouldn't have any more than two allowed for a city our size and only along the freeway at a certain distance apart. I'm wondering if anything moving could be on the signs? That could be distracting, if that's a restriction you can place, or do you typically have things that move? Or is it just a sign? Do we know the answer to that here tonight?
Mayor, I can answer that question.
Yes, please.
No motion is allowed on freeway digital billboards.
Very good, okay.
General advertising, they rotate every eight seconds, so they're static.
Okay, so that's good to hear, no motion. So the only other comment I would make that we've all read in our council packets is just to point out that, you know, we're wanting to do this for our Gilroy businesses, starting with our auto dealers. And yet, of the eight spots that are likely to be on the sign, only two are going to be to auto dealers. The rest could be to anything. And it could, we need to realize that it can also be to businesses that are not in Gilroy. And we don't, you know, we can't, that's the downside of this, is we don't control what's on it. And I'm not saying that's a reason to not consider this. I'm just pointing out, you know, for everybody, that this isn't necessarily signage that's guaranteed for just Gilroy businesses. I mean, once the sign is up, then it is up to, we have very little control over what goes on the sign. So I think it would probably be safe to say that our auto dealers would, would be on there, two or three or however many, you know, sign up to do it, but that there could be other things on there, too, just for us to know. All right, I see a hand by Councilmember Marks. You're on mute.
There we go. Jeff, I have a question for you. Can the city designate that local businesses get first chance at putting something on the sign? And then if there's no takers or there's available slots, then it can go public to, to outside of Gilroy?
I've never really seen an agreement where we would have to give the local advertisers a preference. We do treat local advertisers with discounted rates to try to get the local business. We prefer to have local business on the, on the display. You know, national advertisers may spend more, but they also go away quicker. So we're looking to promote the local businesses, like the dealers. And to be honest, I mean, if all, if there's eight dealers that want the sign and they sell it out, then great.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's safe to say that, given it's on private property, that the city would not receive any revenue for anyone wanting to advertise on the billboard, correct? No, I'm just holding it out there, you know. But, you know, again, in regards to my personal decision, I am in favor of this only if, again, if we can really hone in on sort of the comments that I and Councilmember LaRoma Yos and Councilmember Armandares mentioned about the lighting, Councilmember Hilton. That's my biggest concern, especially at nighttime, you know. And if there's a way to sort of adjust the lighting, so we make it safe for everybody, then I'm in favor of this. If not, then I'm going to go against it because I worry about, you know, and I've seen it driving home, how people, there's accidents because people are probably staring right at that thing and it blinds you. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay, Andy.
Just two quick comments. One is that there certainly would be controls on lighting, on no motion, as Mr. McEwen stated, on the frequency if that signs change the message. Those are common. Also, some cities do obtain revenue from signs on private property as well. So I would not assume that we will not get revenue. In fact, I would assume that we probably will get revenue.
Right. No, thank you, Andy. I'm glad you chimed in like that because, again, I think that's something that we should explore. You know, obviously, again, it's.
Yeah, and in addition, just to amplify, the issue of brightness and the effect on birds, particularly in other kinds of wildlife, has been debated in other cities. And it's, it's something that will certainly be looked into because it's a commonly understood effect of these signs.
Okay, well, the part about the city getting any money out of it is news to me. I didn't see anything about that in the, in our report. So I guess we'll hear more about that as we go. Okay, so where are we going from here?
Madam Mayor, Jeff McEwen had something to add.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to make a comment quickly about the lighting. The, our units and most of the locations around the Bay Area are all controlled at just above ambient light. They dim at night, so they do adjust to, you know, if it's cloudy, it dims down. What you're seeing, and I can make a comment on the sign you're seeing at 101 and 880, is an illegal sign. It was not permitted by the local or state. It was just erected by the property owner, and they are not being, you know, they're just, it's just, it's not controlled to the .3-foot candles that our signs are restricted to. So I know you've seen that one, but if you look at the other signs throughout the Bay Area, and there's about 50 to 60 faces in the Bay Area, you wouldn't see that, just on that one sign.
Jeff, Mayor, can I ask Jeff a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
So Jeff, thank you for that comment. So what you just said right now, is that the local, or excuse me, the private landlord put that big billboard up without sort of approval from the city? And the city can't do anything about it, basically. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, the city, I believe, is in litigation with the, with the city and with the state.
Okay, and I asked that question because, again, and it goes back to Mayor Blenckley's concern about sort of, you know, we won't have any control over it once, you know, if it's approved. So I mean, I think that's important for us to know because, you know, what if something or like, something like that were to happen? I mean, how much control or lock-in control that we have? And then also, in regards to the revenue, Jeff, have you, you know, thank you, Andy, for this, you know, for that input. But I would really like to look into seeing what the city can get back to, you know, a portion of the revenue for that, if we just decide to move this forward. Thank you.
I want to comment also on, in terms of the issue with billboards and litigation that has actually been occurring for decades typically is with old billboards that exist before regulation. And then there's a question of, because they're quite valuable properties, if the city starts to regulate, do you then have to give an amortization period for the owner to take his investment out of the billboard? In other words, it may have to stay up for another 10 years or some period of time. That's typically what the issues have been. With new regulation, we will be able to have quite a bit more control. We will have some content control. We'll have to negotiate that with owners. And we can prohibit certain kinds of messages, for example. We won't have complete control, and I think you'll have to assume, and I think Mr. McEwen has stated, that in order to put up this kind of billboard, presumably, the main revenue driver will probably be big out of Gilroy businesses, just the way you see on other billboards. However, we can require some percentage of local advertising, assuming the local dealers want to do it. So that we will have more regulatory control than Councilmember Tovar seems resigned to potentially.
Okay. Oh, Cindy, yes?
Yes, so I just want to clarify council's support of staff's recommendations, and in particular, the public versus private property issue, because that came up from Councilmember Armandares. So the question is, one, does the council support staff's recommendations? And then number two, does the council want to restrict these to public, private, public property or allow them on both public and private property? Those are the questions.
Okay, I already forgot. I read this report over the weekend, and I already forgot what the advantages were to public versus private. Was there an advantage to one over the other?
An advantage, if I may, of allowing on public, on public properties, that the city has complete control over it. It's, it becomes an effect of a city asset. You can lease the billboard to somebody. You can do economic terms. You can completely control content because you're the landlord, in effect. That's the advantage of public property. The advantage of private property is that there's a lot more private property, and it might be a better place for signs, depending on physical location and abilities. San Jose, for example, as you have read in the paper, has been studying this for years and approved having billboards on 17 public sites, none of which have been built, apparently. However, just about two weeks ago, they decided to drop the efforts to put them on private property because there was a lot of public concern, and there was opposition from the public, although they had been studying that very seriously for a number of years. Generally, so generally, cities feel having them on public property gives the city more content control and potentially more, more financial return also.
But then we're also responsible, and we're responsible to manage the sign.
Well, no, you'd still lease it to, you'd still lease it to a management company. It wouldn't be a side, but because you're the landlord, you're really in control, not only as a regulator, but also as a landlord.
But if we're limiting the sign, if the council ends up saying, we're only going to limit this to two, and they need to be along the freeway, we don't, the city doesn't own property along the freeway, do we?
No, that's what I said, that the advantage of private property is there's more private property in suitable locations for the signs.
Okay.
I think that that's what staff.
Got it.
That's why staff is recommending allowing private property, because it seems to make sense in this context.
Okay. Councilmember Armandares, and then Councilmember Marks.
Question for Andy, do we have more or less control over the content? If it's on public versus private?
I think you have more control if it's on public property, because then it effectively, because, as I say, you're both a landlord and a regulator.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Well, the two things you have to remember, if you're going to do this for the car dealerships, there is no public property along the freeway. That's one. And I believe Jeff is still on the line, so Jeff, maybe you can address what's not allowed to be put on the signs. Are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Currently, we restrict tobacco and any sexual content. And also, the new law was just passed where cannabis cannot be on Interstate 101. That was a big category that was just, just changed. So other than that, we do agreements through cities and through private property where we discuss certain categories that we, we move away from. So it's just part of the negotiation.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I, I, I support, I personally support staff coming back, really, policy recommendations. I would say private property, because to me, signs like this are only appropriate on the freeway. And we don't own, there is no city property along the freeway. So that's how I would look at that. I don't know, council, how do you feel? Okay, Dion's got a thumbs up. I'm not seeing much from you others. Carol, yes? Peter, yes? Rebecca, yes? Zach, yes? Okay, so.
Here, just so, again, sorry, just so I'm clear, because, again, I'm hoping that we can address the two questions I had regarding revenue and lighting. Would that information come back to us before final approval?
Oh, this whole thing is coming back to us. We're asking staff to come back to us with something to approve. Right, they just need direction at this point, and our, our direction is along the freeway, which means private property. And they'll, they'll come back and suggest to us the size and that, and the distance that they should be apart. And if two is two even, I think there should be a maximum of two, no more than two. I don't know if, is that supported by the rest of the council, too, or you just want to limit it to one? Okay, two. Okay, so is that enough direction, Cindy?
Yes, ma'am, and I would address Councilmember Tovar and let you know that we will definitely be looking at the lighting issue as part of the environmental review. And also.
And also the revenue, because, yeah, that will determine my vote, so I need to know that information. Thank you.
I would come with the city agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, can we move on? Moving on. All right, item 10A, Community Development Department Customer Survey Strategy. And this one is Jimmy and Julie giving the staff report.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will give you a very quick introduction. This project precluded many of you and was identified almost a year ago as a way to kind of mimic what some other cities were doing, who we felt had really good customer service and some practices that we saw them doing. And so the area that I think, when it comes to customer service, most councils hear about is community development. I know many of you spend time with developers and businesses who sometimes don't feel that they were treated appropriately. And sometimes I agree with them, and sometimes I don't. But we wanted to identify a process to where these individuals could go through the steps of us. And then by the time they would want to engage council or other folks, you could say, did you go through all the steps? And a lot of times, we know that they don't. They call a council member, they call the mayor and say, I didn't get my permit when they said. And so we wanted to start formalizing our customer service approach and start with our theory and our mindset, and then get into the more specific items of how you get conflict resolution, how we train our employees, and how we just get better at this. And I think you'll see a true commitment from Julie, who was hired actually for this work. She is the only individual in the city with the title of Customer Service Manager, and we did that on purpose. And you're going to, yeah, that's what she does. And so that's what you're going to see, the work that she's done here. I'm really proud of it. I think it's neat. I think this is kind of the cool stuff that we get to see, and I think it's going to mean something. So I'm going to turn it over to Julie, and she's going to show you what she's been working on for the last several months and looking for some feedback as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Julie Wirick, Customer Service Manager with the Community Development Department. This item is really an introduction to the draft customer service strategy for our department. It does, let's see if I can get my slide to advance. There we go. Are you seeing my slideshow and hearing me? Okay.
Yes, we are.
Yes. So just a little bit of a background. Actually, in 2017, when the Community Development Department had an organizational review conducted by management partners, customer service was an overall theme of that report. It focused both on staffing levels and processes and overall project management. The Customer Service Division was created as of August 1st. as of August 1st last year with the primary responsibility of improving development services, focusing on these processes both internally and externally and helping to implement the the recommendations by management partners. In the past, our different divisions in, you know, development essentially have, were kind of siloed in our work. Our role now is to bring everyone together to help an applicant get to their end goal in more of an expedited manner. The Customer Service Strategy and specifically the Customer Bill of Rights is a big step in documenting how we will do that and improve our services. The first step in creating the strategy in the Bill of Rights was to research best practices. We looked at other cities with published bills of rights and customer service programs as well as private businesses that are customer and experience oriented like Macy's and Disney. We also consulted government management organizations, including the Municipal Management Association of Northern California and the International City County Management Association. And we also surveyed internal staff about their own customer service experiences, both within the city and elsewhere. We took that background information and created a framework for the customer service strategy. First, we needed to identify our target audience, our customers, who primarily are all of the citizens of Gilroy. Then we looked at what our customers need. Our customers need regulatory certainty or a clear path from point A to point B in the process. They need complete and accurate and timely information in order to get their permit or license. And they need it fast, at a fair price and in a courteous manner. So the next step was to create a draft customer service vision to make those things the future state of the department's operations. That draft customer service vision is the city of Gilroy delivers services in a fair, courteous and timely manner that ensures transparency of process and provides regulatory certainty. This vision was created with the Community Development Department in mind, but could easily transfer to any department in the city. The vision will be implemented through the Customer Bill of Rights. Again, we looked at what other cities were doing and based on our customer needs, drafted the following five points. The right to fair and courteous treatment, no matter who you are. The right to be heard and have inquiries to result in answers and hopefully a permit. The right to regulatory certainty with a clear path to get that permit. The right to responsive service, including prompt, accurate and complete information. And the right to administrative remedies should these rights, rights not be met. In order to get there from here, staff will need clear and attainable goals outlined in a training program, guidelines and protocols to rely on and tools to do their job well. We will utilize feedback received from customers through direct conversations and surveys and update that training based on what we learn. There are many points in an application process for feedback from customers, many ways to solve a problem and many opportunities to right a wrong. We want to make sure we take the first opportunity whenever possible to correct action if needed. Also, good customer service should be reinforced and examples can be used for training. But if an applicant is not satisfied with our services, we will have administrative remedies in place and a method to document the situation to avoid similar concerns in the future. This will be a formal process to elevate a customer concern to a manager or director as appropriate. And most importantly, be structured to resolve the situation or get the applicant back on track without compromising the city's rules, the city's regulations and processes, or the process for other customers. This will culminate in a post-incident analysis to determine if modifications might be needed for the next project. Our next steps in the customer service strategy are to identify and document what metrics and implementing measures we want to use and the timelines to implementation. These will be developed and presented to council within the next quarter. And priority will be given to creating the formal administrative remedies process and drafting a training manual for staff. Staff will also prepare a quarterly report for the city administrator on successes and areas for improvement. And just to reiterate that great customer service is our goal. And each step in implementing the strategy will contribute to the success of the department and ultimately the city. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Councilmembers, let's go to ourselves. I've got some things, but I'll, I'll go to council first and then we'll go to public comment. Does anybody, Councilmember Marks?
Well, glad that Community Development has done this because I've been getting a lot of text messages right now during your presentation. And this has been a long time in coming. And I'm sure a lot of people who have gone through the process and a lot of business owners are singing hallelujah. And I think they're going to take you up on that. If things are not done in a timely fashion, you are definitely going to hear from them. So I applaud you on what you put together and let's, let's hope it works. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Julie, is it safe to say that this hasn't actually been implemented yet?
It, it has not been implemented yet. This is a work in progress. It is a draft. This is really the first step that we wanted to share what we developed with council and get your feedback.
Okay, no, thank you. I was hoping you would say that because otherwise it's, I would have to say it's not working. I mean, I get contacted too. We all do. And I, I am very careful when people contact me to ask them first, who have you already, what steps have you already taken? You don't just come to me, you know, and, and I don't get involved until they've already gone through a certain path. And, you know, unfortunately, I can name two in last year that should not have gone the way that they did. So I applaud this, definitely support it, understand why we're doing it. We need to get to a, a clear path for people that they can count on and they know who they're supposed to go to because not everybody would know who to call or how to get, how to get help when they've hit a roadblock. So do you have a timeline in mind for like a specific timeline as to when we might we might see this actually implemented?
Absolutely. So we can start implementing pieces of it now. If, if we're satisfied with the Bill of Rights, I'd like to publish that on the city's website, you know, frame it up in our department, make it, make it available to the public. Some things in, in the strategy, some of the metrics that I've identified already that I haven't necessarily shared with the council, but you know, I think I put some of the things in the staff report, like the land management system and the ERP, those things are going to be huge for customer service. Those are, have been, you know, started implementation long ago and those will be up and running by the end of this year. So some things have a long lead time and some things we can implement immediately. At my next report to the council, I will have definite timelines for the different metrics and implementation measures.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton and Councilmember Barco.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Good to see you, Julie. Good to see you in this position. I think you're really good for it. You know, customer, I'm a staff member myself in the city of Oakland, so I mean, customer service is just something that we should all be thinking about as public service sector. So the successes and improvements that you wrote on page 78 of the packet, is there a way that those can be reported out like on the city's website for the general public to be able to know about? Is that just, is that something like quarterly you would come back? Because I know it says that it would be sent to Jimmy. That's, that's one question. And then the only part that I'm uncomfortable with is, and, and Julie, I really want you to speak to this. Do, do we really need to build out a division and a budget to create this division itself? Or is this really truly something that you can't tackle yourself? Because I personally think that sometimes we get what people like to say, paralysis on analysis and overthink it. I think I would love to be, you know, be able to tell somebody, don't call me until you've called Julie. And Julie is the one person that's in the middle of management and city level to be able to really take care of this. So if we could have just, just addressed that because you know, we're going into budget and I saw that you wrote that down there. And sometimes I just feel like we don't need to create a huge entire division over this. Thank you.
Mr. Hilton, I'd like to respond to that. Julie's a planner. And she, that's what she does most of her work on, but we felt that in the department, we needed somebody focusing on that. The, the point that you bring up that everybody should go to Julie is actually one of the issues we have is that so many people just go to one person. And if that person's on vacation or they're sick or they have some issues, then people don't know where to go. So we want Julie to lead this, but if she's the only one responsible for it, it will fail miserably. And so it's not a division on customer service. It's a planner who has the, the title and the focus, but Julie spends most of her time on planning. And that's, that's not a bit of change in that sense.
Okay, but hold on a second. I thought her title got changed last year to Customer Service Manager because I remember when that budget position got created and I remember Mr. Barco said, Jimmy, I expect you to be the one who's in charge of customer service, not have a position. So I know she's a planner by trade, but I could have sworn she was our customer service manager.
No, she is, but she doesn't do customer service all day. Actually, she does as the form of a planner. And that's why she's in the Community Development Department. That was a title that some people didn't like. I, 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 you know, I got support from council to do it. But the term of actually having somebody name that was important to show the focus on customer service. So Julie, I don't know what her percent of time is spent on planning and other things, but the majority of that is because that's where we're focusing our customer service approach on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Barco, and then I see Councilmember Armandares raised your hand.
Um. Reading this report, I gotta tell you, I, I, I didn't know whether to laugh or curse. Um. I, I've built a, a company based on providing the best customer service around. And I'm successful and it's because of customer service. And in the real world and business, if it was going to take us this long to fix a customer service problem, we'd be out of business, folks. Um. And customer service is really, really simple. Treat people like you want to be treated. And in business, that's what we teach our employees. And if they can't do that, hit the road. You're gone. We, you, you just don't tolerate it. And in this plan, you keep re, re educating them over and over and over again, hoping for a different result. I, I'm really concerned reading the report. I don't think it really addressed what I believe is the real problem is the average resident that goes down to City Hall or calls with a question and they don't get a call back. They, you know, they get an answering machine all the time and they walk in and all they're talking to is somebody's back or, or whatever the case may be. I don't think this plan is really addressing that. And I, I believe that to be the, the bigger problem. And, you know, the, those are the people that don't always call their city council member. They just walk away and give up because of the way they were treated. So I, I don't think we're going about this right. I mean, only government could take something as simple as, simple as customer service and turn it into a bureaucracy. And I don't see with this plan, I don't see our customer service changing. I see it probably getting worse. Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for the, the time and thoughtfulness that you put into this. I, I think it's evident in, and also the metrics, right, the, the outcomes that we're looking for. I think we'll, we'll make some significant changes and, and hopefully folks will walk away with a, a better experience and feel like our, our city is being run efficiently. So, so thank you for that. But I'm wondering how, because I see that staff was engaged in creating this plan. So thank you for that. I'm wondering how often will you, will it be revisited with staff? Will they be able to evaluate themselves and their coworkers? And what measures, you know, punitive or otherwise will be taken? Because I'm, I'm worried about that because so much of this is subjective and not objective when it comes to customer service.
So that is all still being worked out. And thank you for that feedback that that is a critical component of, of this plan. This can be revisited with staff all the time. What I put in the staff report, I think, was that, you know, we would have these quarterly reports and can have quarterly trainings or trainings as often as we need. But I really think that a customer service line item is appropriate on staff meeting agendas. And that's a, you know, often a weekly or bi-weekly occurrence to reiterate the importance of customer service, lessons learned in customer service and where we can improve. I'm not a fan of punishment when things go awry. I really think it's a training opportunity. Of course, it depends on what happens. We do have processes through human resources for, you know, documenting insubordination, things like that. But most of the case, it's a, it's just a case of not understanding the process and being able to communicate that to the applicant. So I'm excited to present some of the metrics that I've been, been thinking about and getting your feedback on how to implement those as well.
Great, thank you, Julie.
All right, Councilmember Marks, followed by Councilmember La Roman Yost.
Julie, I think you're on the right track and I agree with you about the punishment, you know. But I think if you ever encounter a staff member that absolutely costs the city business and does not listen to what's being expected of him or her, then, then the door has to be shown to that person. Because you know, it hasn't been good for a long while. You, you and I have talked about what's been going on. You know what I'm referring to. So, and so does the council. When I did my report, this is not anything new that the city has not seen or heard. And Councilmember Barco is absolutely correct. We could go right on through and talk to businesses that have gone to other cities because they got tired of dealing with Gilroy. We can't have that anymore, folks. You know, we need to build our economic developments center as much as possible. We need to bring every business to Gilroy. We need to work hard. We need to be on our game. And I think, you know, all of us, if we hear complaints, we did, Julie, you're going to be hearing from us because now that you have this written down, it's something really good for people to follow. And let's get things moving. I think we're going in the right direction. So thank you, Julie, for what you did.
All right, Councilmember La Roman Yost.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm an optimist at heart, so I, I, instead of laughing or cursing like Councilmember Barco, I think I'm just going to say better late than never. You know, our, our future is spotless here, Julie. So that's what we're working with. Now, I'm, I'm going to bring the positivity that tonight. But, but this issue about City Hall being more business friendly, more proactive about finding solutions, solutions oriented, this has been one of those things that I've heard about my entire tenure here. And after the downtown and after the condition of the streets, this is the, this is the thing I hear about more than anything else. So I am, I'm glad to see there is a, a formalized plan in place. I'm glad we now have something we can measure our performance against. I'm a firm believer that you can't improve what you don't measure. And so this gives us something that we, we now have to measure ourselves against and our performance against. So so Julie, thank you for working on this. I, I know that some of the other council members have said they're going to be redirecting all of the, the, the calls and the questions to you, and I will certainly be doing that as well. But I think this is a, a very important first step to show businesses that we are taking this seriously and we do want to be held accountable. And now we have something against which we can be held accountable. So thank you for your work thus far.
Okay, Suzanne, do we have any public, any comments from the public on this?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay. Well, what are we being asked to do here? We just receive report and give, give direction. I mean, I, I like the direction. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to see it actually in place and to, to be able to refer people to something that we've actually done that is trying to address a problem that sounds the same to me from when I was on the Planning Commission in the 90s. I mean, honest to God, it's, and, and it's, I'm sure we're not the only city that keeps hearing this, but it is absolutely something that we, we can do better at. And that's what we're trying to do with this. So I am, I am certainly optimistic about its success and at least it's certainly an effort, you know. It's an effort. So are we all, are we all good with where this is? And hopefully it comes back to us with, with maybe some actual implementation of at least some parts of it. Right? Okay, very good. Thanks, everyone. We will, all right, I'm going to move on. Thank you, Julie. I am moving, wait. Yeah, so right, I'm moving on to item B, the 2020 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Report. All right, and that one is coming to us from Cindy. Right? All right, this was a fun report to read, let me tell you. I I, I seriously, I enjoyed it. I have a lot of information there. Yeah.
Well, that was the purpose.
Okay.
So hello again. Tonight, staff is pleased to present the General Plan 2020 Annual Report and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The General Plan Report highlights notable activities from 2020, including adoption of the 2040 General Plan, the city's public safety response to COVID-19, the Small Business Relief Program, the St. Joseph's Family Center Rent Relief Program, and development activity that took place in 2020. Staff has also provided a summary handout of notable state housing laws, including SB 35, SB 330, and the Housing Accountability Act. The packet also includes a handout from the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative entitled Affordable Housing 101 and Frequently Asked Questions, and you can see some quick highlights of that here. This table represents a summary of the city's progress towards issuing building permits for the 2015 to 2023 Regional Housing Needs Allocation Planning Period. From January 2015 through the end of 2019, the city issued permits for 1,698 net new housing units, including 63 very low-income units, 487 low-income units, 24 moderate-income units, and 1,124 above-moderate market rate units. In 2020, the city permitted another 76 very-low-income units, 80 low-income units, 15 moderate-income units, and 172 above-moderate market rate units. This leaves 97 very-low-income units and 178 moderate-income RENA units for the two years between 20, January 2021 to January 2023. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Cindy. I sure hope, uh, members of the public have lasted this long with us because this is a, this is themes in this report and the discussion we're about to have, I think, is of interest to, to most people in Gilroy right now. So with that, I'll go straight to council, um, the Councilmember Hilton and then Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Um, I first wanna start out by saying that this is the most comprehensive annual housing element update I've seen present to date, and I'm, I'm very impressed. Um, thank you for taking the time to explain all the current housing situation, the state laws, local laws, possible policies for Gilroy to adopt in order to, um, add more affordability to our portfolio. This issue is not only close to me, but it's many of our residents that have been left behind. And to those future generations graduating high schools looking for a place to call home. Um, so my first concern is that we're putting ourselves at risk by not making the objective design standards for all residential. Um, so I don't know if that's a question that maybe Andy could talk about, but SB 330 is about um, housing production, no matter the affordability level. So what I think we're doing is putting ourselves at risk by in the future, there's gonna be possibilities of having small lots. And let's just say there's, there's five homes that someone wants to build on there. Put one into the, you know, below market rate our portfolio and the whole entire thing is, could be under SB 330 and we would have no say. That's just a, that, that is one concern of mine. Um, and then i- if we're gonna be inserting any type of authority in there, I just don't know h- how that would go. Um, this next RENA cycle is gonna take some creativity on housing production that includes small projects like I just talked about. Um, we can't grow with the majority of our land is zoned for single-family homes. Um, and we just can't, we have to be able to prove our RENA numbers next time around. Um, so the staff's gonna have a very tough time, uh, being able to do that. So my, my first question would be, um, during public outreach, is there a way that we can, cause you have so much information like Mary Blankley said in here, is there a way that we can condense that into possibly one page, uh, summary that the entire community, um, could absorb? That's my first question.
It, when you say condensed, are you talking about just the housing portion, or are you talking about all of the information that was in the report?
No, just pretty much the information, like the current state laws, like SB 330 and those other ones, just a single one-page document. Uh, Morgan Hill has a real nice one that's easy to, I think it's easy for, for everyone to be able to understand.
Yeah, so I have seen that.
I don't know if that's a part of outreach that you all have even thought about.
We can certainly work on a, a flyer similar to the one that Morgan Hill has. I've seen that one.
Okay. Um, and then I'm, I'm still advocating for the need of an inclusionary housing ordinance. I think it's overdue, and in your report, you stated that that might not even be coming to us until 2023. Um, is, do you think that we're on track to build out our housing affordable, our affordable housing portfolio with RENA without the need of that until 2023? I know in 2023, we're gonna need one. But do you think we're on track right now and we don't need to worry about that?
The number of RENA units, um, that Gilroy is, um, being allocated and and really all cities and counties in the state of California has increased for the 2023 to 2031 year. And all cities are indicating that it's gonna be tough to meet those numbers. Inclusionary housing or affordable housing incentives is one way to do that. We'll be exploring all of that, um, in, in the very near future.
Okay, so you sort of didn't answer my question. Do you think we need that now? Is it something that I should advocate for now?
I don't think that's fair, Councilmember Hilton, to ask a staff member what they would advocate for. So I, I think we can note your question. But I, I don't think that puts, uh, Cindy in a very good position.
Okay, all right. Um, and, uh, the last thing I was gonna ask is, um, staff is gonna be taking this to Planning Commission. Is there a way that staff could also take this to the Housing and Neighborhood or Validation Committee as an informational item? Um, they're the only committee in the city that really deals with housing and has a work plan for it and makes recommendations to us.
Yes, sir. I'm actually already working with Maria on that very, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Marks.
Hi, Cindy, thank you for your, your report. I just have a question. For the 178 moderate units, are we still going to count um, some of our low numbers to, and towards that 178? Because I thought it was talked about about a month ago that Karen said we had so many in the low category that we can move it into the moderate, and then we would have the moderate completed. Is that still going to be allowed?
So I did talk to, uh, the, the state, the California Department of Housing and Community Development about that, and we could do that. Um, they, they actually recommended against that because really, you know, providing those low-income units is, is better, but we can certainly put them under the moderate income category just to, to show that we've met all of our RENA.
Okay, because are we penalized at all if we don't get 178 moderate uh, housing units completed by 22?
Well, uh, I mean, there are certain, I don't know, Andy, maybe you can help me here, but, um, in terms of SB 35, the, the types of units that we have, um, permitted um, will affect, like, for example, if a developer comes in and they come in with an SB 35 project, if we haven't met, um, a portion of our RENA, they, we, we would have to process that under SB 35. However, in exchange, there's a number of criteria that they would have to meet, including, um, permitting at least 50% of those units as affordable.
Um, I, I think if I might add, it, it's probably not correct that we're penalized. On the other hand, if you haven't met a quota in some, um, cycle, they tend to add that on to the next cycle. And so we're already looking at the next cycle. So i- it's not, it's not obvious what the best approach is here, whether it would make sense to do what you're suggesting, Councilwoman Marks. I think it's something we ought to look at, but it's not very clear that that is advantageous. And I would also mention, I saw, I'm, I'm giving you a wishy-washy answer, I realize, but I also would, would mention that, um, having, having met the low income, and obviously we've way exceeded that, as well as doing very well on the very low income. Gilroy is doing really very well. Actually, this report, it's not 100%, but it's a very, very positive report compared to most cities. And, uh, cause virtually no cities meet the low or very-low income categories.
Okay, so Andy, then I have another question. Then with our 178 moderate units, if they don't get billed before 22, do they get added into our new RENA count? Since the new RENA count has already come out, correct?
No, I, they may get added in, yes. It's, in fact, I think they probably are incorporated. I'm not sure. Maybe Cindy can clarify that.
So, uh, my, so I've been attending, you know, these informational webinars about this. Um, my understanding is that past performance is not actually, um, being incorporated into the new RENA. And, and yes, the RENA, uh, the draft RENA numbers are out. And there's, it's not anticipated that those are going to change, um, now that they've been sent to the state. Um, but like I mentioned earlier, our RENA numbers did go up just as all cities and all counties in the state, all RENA numbers have gone up.
Okay, great, thank you. And there's just one more thing. I, I hope council and the public, if, well, public probably didn't know if they didn't read the report. They changed that density bonus to 50% of what is zoned, correct, Cindy? So like if we say our buildings should only be two-story high, 50%, that would be one more floor. If we said our building should only go up four stories, then 50% would be a six-story building automatic. Is that correct?
So it's, it's, um, it's, it's complicated. I mean, I can read you what it says here, um, and, or maybe Andy.
Well, I, I think just to shortcut it, what you're saying is basically correct. And it's, in a, it, it could be even worse than that because within a half a mile of something called a major transit stop, you can't have any density control, which again is a new law. So that they've been going in that direction. Uh, in addition, there, um, in some areas that you, you have to allow three extra stories. I mean, it's, it's getting worse and worse. The density bonus law, I mean, from the city's standpoint in terms of local control, i- it's getting more restrictive. I shouldn't say worse and worse. Let me say it's getting more restrictive.
Well, it's gonna really change the whole face of our city. Um, and so it's something for us to think about when it comes, I know we can't do anything within the half mile of the transit. But when we zone, uh, when we do zoning changes, we can control and keep that law in mind when we determine building heights, knowing that this density works in. Uh, okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Armand Darris?
Yeah, um, Jimmy, can you remind me if we have requested already language from staff for a study on an inclusionary housing ordinance?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Briefly, but, cause I'd really like to see, I'd really like to see some draft language on, on that, what it would look like and what other cities have done. Uh, in 2018, I believe, um, when I was on the Housing Advisory Committee, the, um, staff brought back, um, ordinances from, um, the other Bay Area cities, uh, that, similar to, to sizing Gilroy. So I could dig that up, or one of us could dig that up if that would help as a, as a starting point, but it included some really great, um, you know, amenities and language that would generate the, the housing, um, and the incentives that we need.
Can I make one brief comment on that?
Sorry. Yes.
The, the, the issue of an inclusionary housing ordinance, and I'm not taking a position one way or the other, it's a very, i- it is a complex issue because there are pluses and minuses. And there are questions about whether inclusionary housing is better or a fee is better, or an inclusionary ordinance with an in lieu fee. In other words, instead of building homes, developer could pay a fee or, or none of them. And there are people who argue all sides. I think most of you know, I represented the city of San Jose in the leading case of Building Industry Association versus San Jose, and defended their, their ordinance, which was passed in 2010. And we went all the way to the California Supreme Court, and I won the case in 2015, which upheld the constitutionality of such ordinances. So they're legal to do, there's a, there is an enormous debate about, it's, it's kind of like the rent control debate where economists on both sides and interest groups on both sides debate what is better from a social standpoint. So it's not a simple issue to just say, if we have inclusionary housing ordinance, we'll have more low-income housing. It may well be the, the case, but it, it does take some study to try to figure out the best we can for this city.
And I, I could finish that off, uh, to Ms. Armand Darris. Uh, I think you're gonna see here at the next study session uh, some of these topics that you brought up, because we did list everything that you brought up at the strategic planning meeting. And so this idea will be reflected there, and the council can have a further discussion about if that's where they want us to, you know, allocate our time and resources in the upcoming year. So.
Okay, would it be fair to ask that the, um, the work that staff already did in 2018 be, um, be produced so that we can have something, something to look at, some information that they've already done?
Yeah, we can, we can dig that up and, and circulate that to the council, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing the other hands, I have, I have some questions. They are all on packet page 103, and, um, an affordable housing ordinance is, is one of those things. I'll start with that since that seems to be the discussion. I mean, my understanding is we've already applied for, and we were awarded $150,000 in grant funding to be used towards efforts that would help accelerate housing production in Gilroy. So I would like, I'm, I'm gonna ask, where, where is that money right now? Because the rest of the paragraph is informing us of what's coming, of what, what we are going to do to address that and what the process will be.
Yes, so that is something that we wanna bring back to the council in terms of, um, next steps for the Housing Element Update. And as you mentioned, we do have that $150,000 in funding that was, um, targeted towards, um, part of the Housing Element Update. Uh, the inclusionary ordinance or the, um, affordable incentives ordinance, you know, whatever, um, however we put, you know, make that. Um, and then some other housing, um, housing issues. So, yeah, so the, so we're gonna bring all of that back to the council in more detail.
Right, so that, that's already on, that's already, um, on our work plan, I guess is what I'm trying to say, right, to get to. Okay, and then the other, the second question on the same page, it is the, the grid that we have for exactly where we are with our current RENA cycle numbers. And me still not being entirely clear on the numbers, uh, for very low, I see those as being the most difficult ones to meet, so I personally wanna be as proactive as I can be in helping us meet those. So when I look at the very-low category for the current RENA cycle, I, I, I wanna go over those numbers because in the 2015 to 2019 category, we've, we've built 37, uh, very-low-income units at Gateway and 26 very-low-income units on East 10th Street for a total of 63. Then in 2020, we issued permits for 76 very-low-income units through Glen Loma. The sum of 63 and 76 is 139. So is that what that 129 is supposed to be, or is the 129 a different number?
So the, the 129 is 63 plus 76.
Okay, but it's not. That would be 139.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go back and double-check the number.
Okay, and then when you subtract 139 from 236, you do get 97 units remaining. So, when, on the, on the previous page, when you referred to Glen Loma being issued 129 permits, that I guess that, that wasn't right. It's 76, Glen Loma's responsible for, uh, not responsible. The Glen Loma development has brought us 76 very-low-income units, so 76 units towards our goal. Gateway and East 10th brought the other 63. We are currently 97 units short in the current RENA cycle, two years from entering the next RENA cycle, right? Okay, and the only thing that I'm aware of on the horizon in the pipeline, i- if you will, to meet the rest of that, if not more, is what BTA is suggesting out at the train station. Is that your understanding as well, or not?
Well, um, it, so, um, in order to count the units towards our RENA, we have to actually issue building permits.
Oh.
So it's probably unlikely that that project would have building permits.
At a state of, yeah.
Before the end of 2023.
To issue, be ready for permits to be issued before, right, before the expiration of this RENA cycle. Okay. Okay, well, you answered my questions. I wanted to understand that. I, I love this report too. I love, I just mean that it has so much information that is so typically asked. And, and I know we are working, for, for members of the public who don't already know, we are absolutely working on how to better communicate this kind of thing through our website or through the, the Friday email blast that go out. Because it's not even just on RENA numbers. You've, you've put in here what we've done with the money that's come in. I mean, all the money that we have done, as Councilmember Bracco said in the beginning, towards homelessness, that I mean, all the money that we have done, as Councilmember Bracco said in the beginning, towards homelessness that we absolutely do. And as to Councilmember Armandaris's comment that we don't do enough, well, you could say that about everything. We don't do enough for our streets. We don't do enough for our employees. We don't do enough. There's never enough money. That's why we have to prioritize. So it's important for the public to know what it is we do, do. And that way it can be clear on where, where the money has gone. And no matter, no matter what, no matter how much money you have, there will always be more that could be done or more need. That, that just goes without saying. All right, this is something that I think I have to go to the pub, uh, public comment for. Do we have any members of the public who want to comment? If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment. All right, thank you. Then back to council. Does anyone, anyone want to make a, oh, council, I see a hand, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Th- this can be to anybody from staff. So in the report, it was also mentioned that objective standards, design standards could be implemented sooner. And I saw this in our meeting last week too, and I never asked about it. Can you explain our options for that?
Sure. So we, staff is working with Mentor Harnish, who gave the presentation and who's working on the objective development standards. And I spoke with Mentor Harnish today, and we can get some very simple, no graphics, probably not much public outreach standards in place by the end of April. And then we would continue to do the community outreach and provide more substantive objective development standards by the end of summer.
Thank you. And also, as a part of the annual housing element update, there's supposed to be a section on city-owned surplus land data. Where can the city council or the general public find that?
So we do have a current vacant land survey that was updated in February of this year, and I can provide that to the council.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Cindy, I should tell you, you were recognized at the Cities Association meeting, at the last one that I attended, as you were, I mean, damed out loud as someone who's really on all this and helping other cities get, get these numbers in order and addressing Rena. This, this is, we are not alone. Gilroy is far from alone in trying to meet, meet the numbers that we're supposed to meet. Okay, is anyone ready to make a motion to accept this 2020 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Report?
I'll move acceptance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Tovar to accept the 2020 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Report and direct staff to transmit the report to the appropriate state agencies. Roll call vote.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romano.
Yes.
Darrell Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Ray Blankley.
Yes, with that math correction. Check the math on page 103 because I don't think 63 and 76 equals 129.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item C, consent to the appointment of Darrell Jordan as Public Works Director. And for that, we have Leanne.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Happy to present this item to you this evening. It's nice to get some of these recruitment processes finished, finished up and new folks joining our team. In November of 2020, the city commenced a recruitment to fill the vacant position of Public Works Director. After a series of panel interviews with subject matter experts, our department directors and the city administrator, a top candidate was identified for this position, Darrell Jordan. Based on Darrell's knowledge, skills and experience and leadership style, he has been determined to be a strong fit for Gilroy's Public Works Director position. He has undergone a thorough background check, and at this time, City Administrator Jimmy Forbes is recommending that he be appointed as Gilroy's next Public Works Director. Mr. Jordan brings over 25 years of public works experience, and he's worked in both the private and public sector. He's worked for three different public agencies, Merced, Series and Scotts Valley, and he is currently the Public Works Director in Scotts Valley. And he has some private sector experience mixed in with his public sector experience. So he is a person who knows what it's like to be on both sides of the counter. His experience covers all the main functions of public works to include, to include development processing, engineering, traffic and transportation engineering, capital improvement program preparation and implementation, wastewater treatment plant oversight and management of various operations and maintenance functions, as well as things like coordinating with Caltrans, the Water District Transportation Agencies and other outside entities that are important for public works. He also has experience securing and implementing grant funding for public works improvement projects. He also has strong leadership skills, along with his technical experience. He has a strong customer service orientation. He is very action-focused and he, he takes great pride in getting projects completed on time and within budget. He understands and demonstrates the ability to maintain partnerships, develop and lead teams, and he uses the tool of creative problem solving. His management style is that of a coach, while at the same time, holding his team accountable for results. Mr. Jordan is excited to join the Gilroy team and put his talents to work to fulfill the council's and city administrators' priorities. Mr. Jordan holds a bachelor's degree from California State University Fresno in civil engineering and is currently pursuing his master's degree in business administration. He holds a valid State of California Professional Civil Engineering license. So upon consent of city council and, and are issuing the final job offer letter, Mr. Jordan is prepared to begin work with the city of Gilroy on April 12th. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
All right, council members, any question? I see Councilmember Tovar with a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, man. Leanne, thank you for that introduction. I'm excited. Just one question, you mentioned that he's currently the city manager in Scotts Valley Direct.
He's certainly the Public Works Director.
Excuse me, okay. So again, just sort of with his background and stuff, I mean, and I'm excited and I look forward to him joining our team sooner than later. So, you know, I want to commend you all for finding an excellent candidate and, you know, look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? All right. Okay, well then we need a motion to, wait, oh wait, public comment?
If, if you would like to comment on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar, you are making a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, a motion to consent to the city administrator's recommendation to appoint Darrell Jordan to the department head position of Public Works Director. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember La Romano, so I don't know, Carol, I don't know if you beat him to it or not, but.
She can have it.
Okay, we'll use Councilmember La Romano on that. So go ahead, Suzanne.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romano.
Yes.
Darrell Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Ray Blankley.
Yes, hopefully he's going to see an additional $4 million to his budget, right guys? We're getting our streets fixed. Okay, city administrators' reports.
Mayor, I have to report this evening.
Oh, okay. Andy?
Likewise.
Well, we could use that after the start we had for this meeting. All right, so closed session. Is there any public comment on closed session items?
If you would like to comment on the closed session items, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, then we will adjourn to closed.
We have, we have to read this into there. So it's, yeah, that's normally my job. This, this will take a while. So don't, don't hold your breath on it. This is, there's really only one closed session. It's conference with labor negotiators, collective bargaining pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 and Gilroy Code Section 17A114. The collective bargaining units are Local 2805 IAFF Fire Unit, representing Gilroy firefighters, Management Associate, Gilroy Management Association, Gilroy Police Officers Association, representing police officers. Also, unrepresented confidential exempt employees, unrepresented confidential non-exempt employees, non-exempt part-time temporary seasonal employees, exempt part-time temporary seasonal employees and department head employees. The city negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, interim city administrator, Leanne McPhillips, HR Director. Anticipated issues under negotiation are wages, hours, benefits, working conditions, memorandums of understanding, City of Gilroy and Gilroy Firefighters, Local 2805, City of Gilroy and Gilroy Management Association, and City of Gilroy and Gilroy Police Officers Association, Inc. We do not have to take a vote to go into closed session, but once in closed session, you need to take a vote to remain in. Okay?
Okay. So are we good to continue or does anyone need to go to the bathroom?
I'm going to stop the live stream and we will get the rest of the people out that we don't need to have, and I will transfer hosting duties to Jimmy.